Okay. So, thank you for joining us this evening for the March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, Montessorino Regular City Financial Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I'd like to point out a few house rules to assist the council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with this regular city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized that a mayor is unable to speak for the council. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or comment. And lastly, when we are not all in the same room, all votes in this meeting must be taken by roll call.
Thank you. I will call the regular, actually, it's a, it's a replacement meeting of the city council of the city of Montessorino on Tuesday, March twenty eighth, to order at seven oh three P M. And I think we'll start with council member Turner, who's, who's requesting to attend remotely. Council member Turner, the floor is yours.
You are a mute.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor. With my continued hip injury, I'm still unable to move around. I wasn't able to schedule physical therapy the last couple of weeks because the establishment was closed due to power outages. Therefore, I'm requesting that the council approve my remote attendance at this meeting.
Thank you. Maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before the vote is taken, can I just ask for clarification in the record? That council member Turner is requesting that she attend via teleconference under the emergency cause provision of Government Code Section five four nine five three.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So, Miss Councilmember Turner, can you just confirm that for the record?
Yes, I confirmed that for the record.
Thank you.
Five four nine four three.
But just that it's the emergency circumstances rather than the just cause. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Mekachuk.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer.
Yes.
Councilmember Alahi.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
And Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, we will have the pledge of allegiance, and for that, I would ask that Acting Captain Nylander from the Los Gatos Montessorino Police Department say the, lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ready?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, one nation, under God.
Justice for all.
Thank you. Um.
Mayor, you haven't come every week.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Alahi.
Present.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer.
Present.
Mayor Mekachuk.
Present. Orders of the day, what I'd like to do is I received a message from the City of San Jose, our Government Affairs Director, Ryan Coonerty, and he said that he was unable to attend the meeting tonight, so we will not have a presentation by him as item number two. And I believe that those are the only changes to the order of the day that I'm aware of. Would other council members like to propose any changes to the orders of the day? None? With that, we will continue, and just before we go to our first presentation and the only presentation, we did have someone appear as the, our Assistant City Attorney. You appeared on the screen. If you could just introduce yourself briefly so that we're all aware of who you are, that would be fabulous.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor. My name is Denise Bazano. I work with Sergio Rudin, who is the City Attorney for Montessorino for Burke William Sorenson. I'm all, actually also identified as the Assistant City Attorney for Montessorino, so I'm happy to join you this evening in Sergio's stead.
Thank you very much. I just thought it's good for everyone to know who all the players are here in the room and on the camera. With that, Chief Fields, it's over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jamie Field, Chief of Police for Los Gatos Montessorino Police Department, and here this evening to present on the biannual Montessorino Police Services Report. This report will cover the months of July through December of last year, although some of the information that we may share may even encompass some of the beginning of this year, given some of the significant storm events that we've seen, and we want to make sure to share some of the resources and attentive public safety that's been given to all of us. So, be following along on the slides here coming as well. So, we continue to really focus on recruitment and retention, that being one of our number one priorities internally. From recruitment's sake, we have been able to hire several folks, both sworn and professional. And as you've known over the last couple of years, we have been really focused in this area specifically to sworn and in dispatch. We have brought on an additional dispatcher that comes to us from another agency outside of California. He is in training and doing well. We also brought on two additional officers that come to us from other agencies, so prior experience, which is wonderful to bring on our team with the police department. Next slide, please. I should also mention that we have a swearing in coming up April twenty sixth to recognize all these individuals. In addition to what is not up there is we've also brought on two additional chaplains as our chaplain that was with us for many years, more than twenty years, has since retired, and so we have welcomed two chaplains to the police department to provide support to our police staff as well as to the community those times of need. In terms of the department context, what I wanted to highlight there is the many mandates and court decisions that we have, we are in the process of incorporating and absorbing into the police department. Many of these mandates are unfunded mandates, and specifically, you'll see up there, you may have even heard of some of them. Senate Bill Two was one that was highlighted quite a bit last year, and that was focused on the certification or decertification process to policing. So, similar to other professions, whether it be the medical field, legal field, we as well also have to have certification and abide by certain moral and legal standards. And so, there is more of a process and spotlight on that's, that's being overseen by post-police officer standards and training. In addition, Senate Bill Sixteen even expands a little bit further in terms of some of our investigations and the retention, as well as the transparency surrounding some of those investigations and the availability to the public or courts. In terms of additional resources, technology specifically, we are looking to implement a drone team that is in process, and more will be coming on that in the next couple of months, but well into that process. And that is incorporated into our Assembly Bill Four eighty-one process surrounding military equipment, and that was reported and brought into ordinance before Los Gatos last year, and that will also be brought forward again this year. Military equipment is really addressing a lot of our equipment, whether it be the drones, some of the equipment that our tactical teams use as well. So, in addition, our Axon cameras, we continue to update some of those and the interface and just the technology there as well. Those Axon cameras are specific to our body worn cameras and other resources. E-bikes, I know that that is an area of attention kind of throughout California, we have heard, and we are in the process with our Youth Commission in Los Gatos of folding e-bikes into our bike ordinance. We will be sharing that ordinance information with, with the city manager as well as mayor as well once that is brought forward, and that will be probably within the next month. So, just information that is in process that will also benefit Montessorino as well, should they look to incorporate some of that language. Next slide, please. This is similar to a slide that was presented during the last biannual report out, but I think that is really important to recognize the nine eight eight phone number that's available, and that's really related to mental health crisis or concern. Similar to nine one one, in the event of engaging law enforcement, other public safety resources, nine eight eight removes law enforcement from mental health component. And so, what it allows is for evaluations through the suicide crisis prevention line. And what they do is they triage the information that's coming in, and then they determine what resource countywide might, that's available that might be most appropriate for the incident that's unfolding. Some of those resources are overseen by the Behavioral Health Services, which is a county entity, and they oversee mobile crisis response team, which is frequently what our officers engage with if we have a mental health incident. And many of our calls do have a underlying mental health component to it. In addition, there's also MRSS, as you'll see up on the screen, and that's available for a lot of juvenile calls as well. And then, there's also Trust. That's new as of about September of last year. That is in contract with Behavioral Health Services through the county, and that is a, another, another entity that's available to respond out to some of the mental health crisis concerns, whether it's in the moment of crisis, follow-up, or the family is looking for additional resources as well after the crisis may have occurred. So, just some of the partnerships that are available. You'll also see some of our reports that are up there. Those reports are specific to reports actually taken by the officers, and you'll see there's about a difference of nine from one timeframe to the next. That nine could simply be due to maybe an individual that's found assistance, and we haven't had to respond out as frequently. So, there could be very easy purpose or reasoning behind the differences in numbers. But it doesn't mean that we only have responded to forty or forty-nine mental health calls. Those are only the ones that ended up having reports taken. Next slide, please. This is the patrol activity, whether it be the calls for service or the self-initiated calls for service by the officers and by the resources that we have, and it just shows the breakdown from month to month. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Acting Captain Nylander, who oversees our operations bureau.
Hello, and good evening. So, up here on our slide here, we have some of the statistics that show from July to December. What kind of, the numbers here just kind of played out there. So, in July, we had seventy-eight calls for service and thirteen proactive incidents. August was seventy-three calls for service and thirty-one proactive incidents. September, eighty-six calls for service and eighteen proactive incidents. October was eighty-four calls for service and twenty-eight proactive incidents. In November, seventy-eight calls for service, and we jump up to forty-two proactive incidents, and December, eighty-four calls for service and forty-five proactive incidents. The reason you see that increase in number there, the forty-two and the forty-five proactive incidents in November, December, is that correlates with the property crime increase, residential burglaries and whatnot, and directed traffic enforcement within Montessorino and within the city that try and, or offer burglaries. Over to the right-hand side there, you'll see the response times. Those response times for priority one calls for service average four minutes and forty seconds. The priority two calls average six minutes and fifty-one seconds, and our priority three calls average seven minutes and fourteen seconds. Next slide, please. On this slide here, this is our traffic collisions during that timeframe. Fortunately, there's only five. None of them are DUI-related. The primary collision factors there on the right-hand side, we had two that were unsafe speed, one that was a stop sign violation, one hit and run, and one unsafe turning movement. The bottom graph shows the PD collisions in total, not just Montessorinos. That's Los Gatos and Montessorino combined. They're showing me a traffic collision percentages, of which thirty-three percent were caused by unsafe speed. Thirty-seven percent were an unsafe turning movement, twenty-two percent were a right-of-way violation, and eight percent were DUI collisions. Next slide, please. Here, we're highlighting our flock program. So, the flock cameras, which implemented the two-year pilot program, and still continuing on. Throughout the town of Los Gatos, there's currently sixteen cameras, which were purchased by the city, and they're up within the city. There's additional seventeen cameras throughout Los Gatos and Montessorino, which are currently being utilized. Out of the seventeen cameras, five are in the city of Montessorino, which are owned by private residences. Cameras, just today, we had, we had a call for service for somebody who was watching their flock camera and saw somebody driving in the neighborhood, so we jumped up out of the car, started taking pictures. Were able to respond out using that flock camera, identify who the driver was, to try and help the resident, let them know that this was, actually ended up being a contractor, but to help us do some investigation to help the, the resident feel safe. So, we have several cases within Montessorino where we've utilized this system. The Los Gatos cameras have provided some information, right search warrants and whatnot, on some Montessorino residential burglary cases. In addition to, we've used the system to also stop some potential burglaries that were going to occur by catching people as they came into town. Next slide, please. And of those, those cases, we wanted to highlight one of the cases where we got the flock alert. And the way that it works is the cameras see the vehicle drive by, the license plate reading system from the camera sends an alert through the system. Our dispatch receives that alert, and they notify the officers of the alert. And what the alert was, in this case, we wanted to highlight was back in July, there was a vehicle traveling westbound Highway Nine approaching Quito. The town of Gatos camera that's on Highway Nine out there picked up the car. The car was associated, is a stolen vehicle associated with several residential burglaries in San Jose and Los Gatos. Based off of that flock hit, the officers were able to plot the area very quickly. They found the car driving slowly through the neighborhoods, going through Montessorino city neighborhoods. They stopped the vehicle based upon it being a stolen vehicle, searched the car, found what we call burglary tools within the car, and the people who were in the car were on probation and parole and not for committing burglaries. So, we believe that was a case, a good case, where it stopped burglaries from occurring that night. And that's a proactive case that was initiated by the flock case. One of the property crimes that we had during this timeframe, we wanted to highlight, off of Dave's Avenue, we had the resident calling, said there's somebody in the backyard that jumped into the fence, over their fence, and they were wearing masks and gloves. There was three people in their backyard. They believed that their house, home was about to be broken into. The dispatch put out the call for service, the surrounding officers who were close by responded lights and sirens. And we believe those sirens probably scared off the suspects before we arrived. And but what's a highlight here is we were there within two and a half minutes, two of the actual residents and on the ground, actually making sure that we stopped that burglary from occurring. Ultimately, we searched the area. The suspects were scared out of the area, is the belief, but it's the quick response which stopped that burglary from occurring. And then, as far as persons crimes goes, there's several notable cases that have occurred throughout this timeframe within Montessorino. However, we can't go too far into detail on them because they involve some juveniles and whatnot. But we did have several domestic violence cases, several different assault cases, and one assault, the deadly weapon case, where there were some weapons involved, but that was not a random crime. That was a by family disturbance. So, that was the last one we wanted to highlight there. I will turn it back over to Chief Field.
So, what's highlighted up here on, on this screen is really community policing, and that was really a force multiplier for us when we can engage with the community. And just like Acting Captain Nylander was mentioning, to encourage those to call us, let us know when they see something suspicious, to work with us, and to really open up those, those opportunities for communication. So, Neighborhood Watch is a great opportunity for that, and recently, we just did a Neighborhood Watch with the Viewfield residents. I believe we had at least eighteen in attendance there, and that was just within the last couple of weeks. But during the timeframe of reference here, from July to December of last year, there were six Neighborhood Watch meetings. So, most of those are all new Neighborhood Watch meetings to just encourage that proactive nature of what to look for, and what resources are out there, of what to expect when a dispatcher, or when somebody calls into a dispatcher, and what those call questions may be. Additionally, vacation checks. We always try to promote vacation checks when individuals are on vacation, especially in the Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday, that this timeframe does represent individuals that live within the community of both Los Gatos and Montessorino can get online and specifically through our transparency portal, or calling into dispatch, or working with our community outreach coordinator, Jackie Rose, and get their address listed on vacation checks. So, what does that mean? During that timeframe, there is two hundred and nine residences that did this, and that meant that we had our volunteers of policing go out and check their residence. Each time a check is done, it's logged. So, during that time of the two hundred and nine residences that were signed up, there were six hundred and sixty-three checks, and that's just specific to Montessorino of those residences. So, if there is a bad actor that's out there and monitoring the neighborhood, they will see somebody walking up to that residence, while it may not be occupied necessarily, but they'll see that there's attention being given to that residence. And the individual isn't very bright, that's representative police department. The volunteer has a bright jacket on. They are driving a vehicle that is clearly marked as associated to the police department as well. So, at least it brings visibility and awareness, and even to the neighbors as well. So, we encourage promoting that. The vulnerable community support, specifically what we're getting at here, is for unhoused residents. We know that there's not many that venture into the Montessorino areas, but we also know that it's important to provide the support even to the surrounding communities, and where that support is heavily based is with the interfaith community, specifically Methodist and St. Luke's Church. The Methodist Church provides various services, including showers, and St. Luke's is providing services surrounding controlled substance, like alcohol anonymous meetings, as well as pantry programs. And we frequently even have our officers out there, just making sure to check in on them and see if they need any kind of social services, transportation, or other things that we can help be a bridge for. The SRO, School Resource Officer Agreement, that was renewed as a cost-sharing agreement with Los Gatos Union School District, and they, that's for five schools, including Dave's Avenue School, as well as Los Gatos Saratoga Union High School District. And so, our School Resource Officer really provides services to six different campuses, but it includes Dave's Avenue School, where he does frequently spend time out there and assists in various educational and prevention and enforcement when necessary, but including bike rodeos as well. So, he is known out there at the school, does from time to time take our therapy dog out there to the school and provide school, the support to, to Dave's Avenue School. And that is a contract that's in continuous through twenty twenty-four. The Community Police Academy, we just hosted our inaugural one last year. We did have members in our Community Police Academy from Montessorino. It was well received, and we hope to be able to provide that again this year as well. I mentioned about the bike rodeos, coffee with a cop. We did have two, including one that was here at one of our closer coffee shops off the north Santa Cruz at Starbucks there, and we did have a number of residents from Montessorino that visited us. And finally, the Montessorino picnic last year, I thought that was so well attended. We had our staff out there, and it was just a beautiful day to come together as a community and for them to also get to know us from the public safety. Next slide. Just a little bit more to end on with the partnerships, and I already spoke about the Los Gatos Saratoga Union High School and the Los Gatos Union School District in terms of the School Resource Officer. But I'll start with our two, emergency preparedness, Community Emergency Response Team and or Disaster Aid Response Team. The Community Emergency Response Team, that is, it's community members that have taken part in a twenty-two hour training program. I know the council member, Ruina Turner, has taken part in that, and I know that there is interest among the council. We appreciate that support. Once somebody graduates that program, then we are notified of that by the police department. The program, the training itself, is put on by San Clara County Fire Department. Once that individual completes that program, then they can take part in our Community Emergency Response Team trainings that are ongoing. We have one that's coming up here in May. A lot of it is based around communication, because we know in emergencies, communication is, is key. But it's really providing that other, that extra level of vigilance and awareness of what individuals can do within their community to become more resilient, whether it be basic first aid, just checking on one another, knowing the resources that are out there, how the police department operates, and how they can really interface with us, the way that we use Community Emergency Response Team and the Disaster Aid Response Team just in the last three months was strictly around, or mainly focused on our storms, and being able to go out and do canvassing of the area, and we had certain members from Montessorino that did come in when we opened up our Emergency Operations Center in early January and did assisting canvassing for trees down, damage, wires down, and other hazards potentially in the Montessorino area. So, we were able to at least offer that. Our Disaster Aid Response Team was in our Emergency Operations Center even today and ready and able to go out and respond should there be a need. They are a force multiplier for us in many ways, as they will go out and do traffic control for us. So, we don't have officers there, community service officers that may be allocated to other needs. And they've been a force multiplier for us even in, in criminal investigations as well. So, they, they're a wonderful additional resource. The Police Foundation, they do a lot of fundraising for us, and they are ambassadors for the police department and what Los Gatos Montessorino Police has unique abilities to offer to both of the communities that we serve. They did a recent fundraising for us that was focused on the drone systems, but they have done fundraisers for us to be able to support even our outer desk carriers, our body worn cameras, and many other areas as well. So, we appreciate their partnership, their support for us as a nonprofit organization that we do have a is pass-through account into the police department's budget where we are able to accept their donations to be able to, to supplement us in many ways. And with that, both myself and Acting Captain Nylander are available for any questions.
Thank you for the comprehensive report. I wrote down a couple of things, but what I'd like to do is first of all, say that public safety adds value to the city of Montessorino, and we thank you and your officers and your staff for providing that public service and public safety. I could make a number of comments, but I'd really like to hear from council members. If you'd like to make a comment or ask the chief or the acting captain a question, please do so, and then I'll open it up to the public.
I'll start. Thank you once again for coming. So, it's very, see you guys, and the hard work you guys are doing is paying off. I mean, we have incidences, but everything's under control, and I like it that you guys are able to do more corrective stuff. And that's what's really about, you know, once it's happened, trying to get to this, this is very difficult. So, that's great. I, I, I'll just curious on a couple of things. One, did you mention the military equipment? What is, what's the goal in there? What kind of military equipment do you have, or you expect to get?
I'll turn that over to Acting Captain Nylander, because he will be doing our updated report, actually, to the Los Gatos Council here in about a month. So, this is a little, little on the early end of things, but you can give probably a high level of what some of those items are.
All right. Thank you for the question. I appreciate this. There's a lot, there's a very large definition of what military equipment is classified as. We refer to it as military equipment, because that's what the Assembly Bill is written as. So, that's why we have to refer to it as that. With that said, we as Los Gatos, we have, we have rifles that we use, they're standard duty patrol issue rifles, which is required to be reported on military equipment, because it is a assault weapon type rifle. However, it's not a standard issue rifle you'd use in the military. It's just required to be called that, reported as such. The other things that we use in Los Gatos, we have our tactical teams, our SWAT teams and whatnot, that have what's, what's called noise flash devices that make a bright light, that have lots of smoke to go out. It's just, it's a distraction device. Those are required to be reported as well. We don't have some of the other items, such as armored vehicles and things like that, that this is reporting out on the, my traditionally think of as military equipment. There's just some legal mandates in there that report us, require us to report that as military equipment. We also have forty millimeter de-escalation tools, which are less lethal impact tools that we use. There is a device that launches, launches a kinetic piece of foam that is also required to be reported out as military equipment. Those are our main items that we have, that we refer to as the military.
Our drones, are you getting some of them?
I'm sorry.
Are you getting some drones?
So, our drone program is in process right now. We are So our drone program is in process right now. We are working on getting more drones. We do have one right now. They are not autonomous drones. They actually have a person who's deciding they're flying them and they're used for the escalation tool as well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And this is your question, somebody else. Does it, does it come out of concealed weapons? I was just curious. Are people allowed to carry concealed weapons?
So a, uh, thank you for the question. A permit is, is still required. The reason that the concealed weapons permit was up there on. I believe it was the second slide. It's because of a change and a decision, a court case decision in New York ruins this. Decision is what it's referred to and it removed the requirement of good cause. So now that new court case that came down, we're in the process right now of having to make some adjustments to our policy. So individuals can still apply for a CCW permit to either the sheriff or to the local police department. And that would be approved by either myself or the sheriff. And that is something that is, that is right now in process. There's even a Senate bill that's in place right now, Senate Bill Two. This year, different than the other one that I mentioned up there. So Senate Bill Two related to twenty twenty-three and it addresses. Concerns such as sensitive places. And other language in there, but it's still in process. So it is not, the good cause is a significant change. For CCWs, that's, that's something that law enforcement is adjusting to.
Thank, thank you for that. My, my, my last question is, sir, do you know how many members there are from what you said?
I don't know, but what I would caution on is. We have a number of individuals that graduate the CERT Academy. It doesn't necessarily require them to be involved in the active CERT program. Some individuals take it just for a greater level of awareness. For them, for their immediate neighbors or for other individual purposes. Others do want to be engaged in our, our program that is overseen by the police department. We welcome to be, welcome them to be engaged in it to whatever level that they're comfortable.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I too want to thank you and your, your whole team for all the great work that you do. It's very, very great. As you may know, I'm a detailed oriented person, so I have a very detailed question. When you drive around in a car, I'm almost speaking on your relatively safe. But my main concern is about bicyclists and pedestrians, particularly on two streets that are sometimes called the racetracks. Through Montesirino, it's Pinebent and Dave's. I was wondering if. Anything can be done to, to make those streets safer, or maybe do more, more controlling radar cars? Or maybe something else?
And I think that might go into even a deeper conversation that we may want to involve some of our, our partners with Parks and, with the Parks and Public Work Resources as well. Because sometimes there's kind of some collaboration that can occur there from the infrastructure as well as input from our, our traffic resources as well. So we do have a traffic sergeant, Sergeant Cowiloa, that could engage in some of those conversations and I would have to. To follow up on whether or not he's already been engaged in some of those conversations. So, but thank you for the question.
I'll follow up with the sergeant.
And you can absolutely reach out to me and I can pretend to put you into connection there. I just don't want to, to speak. Prematurely on something that's already being discussed.
Thank you.
I see Councilmember Turner has her hands raised. Hand raised. Go ahead, Councilmember Turner.
Thank you for being here, Chief Fields. Later in this meeting, we will be discussing. The second NICP for Montesirino at City Hall. Could you really, could you talk to us about how the NICPs are used by emergency preparedness? And, and why it's important to a city? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. So the Neighborhood Incident Command Post or NICP is really a location that houses. Various resources for the community, community emergency response team. Some of those resources are, like I said, communication. So whether it be radios, other things like tarps. Or even pop-up tents. And so really it's a location for a community to be able to come to feel safe. To feel like they can get some of their answers to maybe recharge, should they need to. And then even if they need some basic first aid needs. So it's an area as well for the community emergency response team. To respond to and then deploy from. So it's not just for the community to come to, it's in a, a location to deploy from. And so when I talk about the community emergency response team, those are volunteers. So it needs to be a location where individuals can come. And be able to do canvassing of their neighborhoods or neighborhood. So in this sense, I'll talk about Dave's Avenue. So there is a, over there in Dave's, there is a Neighborhood Incident Command Post that's located over there. And we have done trainings over there where we've done injects or scenarios and they. Hit little cards and they go out and canvas particular areas and bring the information back. That information is then relayed to our emergency operations center. So in the event of a large scale and what we always talk about is an earthquake. Or more recently, what we've talked about is even with wildfires. So how do we be able to make sure that all of our community is okay? And then get that information back to where our critical decisions are being made, which is at our emergency operations center. And should additional resources be needed, then it communicates to the county emergency operations center. So it's just kind of. A hot scotch, I guess. But really, it's just an area for those deployments to be made to be able to go out and evaluate. Needs of the community and then bring that back to that central point location.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? No, I wrote down the e-bike ordinance and the youth commission involvement. In Los Gatos. Have you reached out at all to the Montesirino Youth Commission? I know that ours is. A little smaller and I'm half looking at Burton, who's our liaison with the youth commission. Could you answer that?
Sure. And thank you for the question. So we have been working with our youth, the Los Gatos Youth Commission. And they have been working on that ordinance specifically as well as a training video as well. And that will be presented actually next week. Well, the video is still in, in process. But the ordinance will be presented, it's expected to be presented next week at the Los Gatos Council. And then we can absolutely provide that should, should they want to look at how that works with. With the current ordinance, bike ordinance for Monastirino as well. That would be something of interest. Absolutely.
Go ahead. We, we have to fire chief your last, last, I think a couple, couple of, last session. One of the questions obviously concerning, you know, the fire and everything else is. Your fire does happen, I hope it doesn't happen, but if it does happen, there'll be a very difficult time for residents to get out because there's only a couple of streets. And I, I asked him if he had figured it out and he said, well, I'm depending on the police department to take care of it. But since you're here, I was going to ask you that question. Have you looked at any other means? I mean, if all the streets are clogged, fire trucks can't get in there, you guys can't get in there. Are there any shotguns available or are there any other plans that you might have thought about and how to go to places that should be clogged otherwise? I know the, the tree fell here a couple, last time, last storm and this whole period was blocked for a while. So I don't, I, you know, there, there, we can build a new road overnight. I was going to, I don't know if there's any other planning you've thought of doing that might. Help you get to places which would otherwise be clogged.
So excellent question because we had, we actually were able to put some of our efforts to work in a fire that we had up on. Believe it's up on Wiffy last, I'm going to guess right about last August. So what we do is we immediately establish unified command with the fire department. So that way there is no breakdown in the communication of the decisions that need to be made with their expertise, their awareness. As boots on the ground with the fire, letting us know the direction, the wind patterns and they provide us. With input on where the evacuations need to be made. Learning from prior significant incidents, we're all familiar with the Paradise Fire and the importance of really evacuating. Early on and getting way ahead of that because we know that it's not the immediate flames that can be harmful. It's sometimes the, the sparks. That start fires elsewhere or the impact of smoke on some of those, some of those that may be very vulnerable asthma or under. Other underlying conditions. So the model now is to try and evacuate extremely ahead. So that we can alleviate some of the buildup of, of traffic concerns. What we did in that case is immediately shut down major corridors and were able to start getting out. Getting the resources in because it's just as important to get resources in as it is to get the residents out. And so we were able to start establishing. That model right away. Thankfully, the fire department was able to get the fire under control very quickly. And, but we had already started to start calling in the additional resources that would be needed. And that was very early on when the, the smoke was still relatively contained and it was still a small fire. We have had those conversations that we, we've taken on the model that to use time to our advantage. And to start giving those early warning notices, because when it gets to the mandatory evacuation. We know that that's going to be very exhausting to our existing resources and we'll need to be potentially providing aid to those that are maybe not as mobile. Or need additional help. So getting the notice out there early on and making sure to collaborate with, with our. The city manager as well on how to get that messaging out and to make sure the messaging goes out to all of you. So I'm sure that the constituents would be reaching out for some answers and, and, and a understanding of, of how we're operating. So our process is to get on the evacuation early.
Thank you so much.
I would like to see if there was a member of the public that would like to say anything. If relevant to the police presentation, if you would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. Oh, we have a member in the chambers here. Former Mayor Lufo.
Thank you.
Please approach the, the podium.
Sure. Thanks. Thank you for the service you provide. I just wanted to mention to you and to council. And I want to underline what this Councilman Walshhammer said about Dave's Avenue. In the old days, pre-COVID, the police used to regularly park at Dave's and police the stop sign there. And I think it made a difference. I think you need to give tickets for people who roll that stop. It's tedious, you'll pay some abuse, the council may take some abuse, but more importantly, every night when I'm walking the dog. There are people blowing the stop sign, a copy and a cat are going thirty or forty miles an hour. It's obviously kids. And they're doing it and it's going to result in a chase, but I think you guys have to stop that and it's got to be done before somebody gets killed or hurt. They may be in the chase that you need to do, but we need to find a way to stop that. If we need to put the red light camera out there, a stop light cam, a stop sign camera. That flashes, I don't care if it's effective or not. We've got to stop that corridor and what's going on there because it's really getting out of people. So thank you and I hope council can follow up on that as well.
Thank you. Anyone, did anyone raise their virtual hand? No, I will close public comment on that. And once again, I'd like to thank you on your six-month report. And hopefully we will see the number of incidents going down and the number of preventive issues. Going up. And I know Chief Field, you've explained to me before that it's hard to measure. Incidents that you prevent, but I do believe that those, those descriptions that you had were very informative. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. And I would just like to leave the community and the council with, with one additional tool and I know I've talked about in the past, but. Lgpd primographics.com, you can access it through our transparency portal, but if you're ever curious of any of police activity. That's happening in the Monastirino area or on a particular street, you can put in the date range or the particular date or even the address. And there is quite a substantial bit of information that is available and it's updated about every twenty-four hours or so. So you can go, I encourage you to go to that transparency portal through our webpage. There's a lot of information that's available on there. Including the crime graphics information, which is the citizens portal into our. Computer automated data system. And so it allows for the community to at least. See what's being done out there for this alarm, if there's a domestic disturbance. Or potentially some additional information that they would like to have at their fingertips as well. But thank you for your time this evening and it's an honor to serve as public safety for Monastirino. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, what I'd like to do is we're not having the second presentation. Oral communications at this point in the, in our meeting, any member of the public may speak. Or up to three minutes on any item relative to the city of Montesirino that is not on the agenda. If you would like to make a public comment, please raise your virtual hand or. Come to the podium if you're in chambers.
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's on the calendar.
So come to the podium, please.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's on the calendar. I'm here to discuss municipal code revisions. Related to swimming pools. And this is a specific, there's been continued discussion. And I'm not sure if it's on the calendar or not. Will I be able to speak more than three minutes later?
Sure.
Perfect.
And we do have someone raising their hand.
We've got a virtual, someone raising their virtual hand. Go ahead, please.
Lydia?
Yeah.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can, I can hear you guys. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Yeah. Thank you so much, city council members, for giving me this opportunity to speak to you. I wanted to raise the issue of the recent power outages that the city has been facing. This past like reason, it has just progressively gotten worse. We had a power outage of nearly eighteen hours and then it grew to thirty hours and then eventually we had almost fifty-five plus hours. Of power outage. It has caused, you know, extreme difficulty to a lot of our residents. PG&E, like first of all, I'm grateful to the PG&E crew that is on land, that is actually coming out in the inclement weather. To fix all power outages, but you know. On the other hand, PG&E as a company that holds the monopoly over, you know, gas and electric in this region. Is failing all its customers, you know, and I just wanted to kind of raise this question as to what is. Not just Montesirino, but cities and counties doing to make PG&E accountable for putting so many. People, including the elderly and the kids into so much of difficulty, you know, are, yes, that is an inclement weather. Yes, it is a natural occurring phenomena, but this storm that we are facing is nothing compared to the storms that elsewhere. In the country has faced, yet we are facing one of the longest power outages being in the heart of Silicon Valley. This is completely unacceptable that to in a, like in a first world country, in a developed country. I grew up in India where power outages were common, but that was a developing country and even then we never had. Like a power outage that lasted several days, you know, this is gross inability of PG&E to. You know, satisfy their customers and I'm just wondering what are the government agencies doing about this whole thing?
Thank you for your comment and. I truly wish that I had a good concise answer as to how PG&E is going to. Remediate the situation, but I don't have that and I know that they're working pretty hard right now. And I would recommend that you contact the CPU City. As bad as that sounds. Are there any other comments from the public? If so, please raise your virtual hand.
No, their hands are.
I will close oral communications and then if we could turn to written communications. Have we received any written communications?
All written communication were forwarded to every of council members and uploaded into the.
All right. Thank you. And then we've got, moving on to the consent calendar. We have two items. Uh we have two items on the consent calendar. Would any member of council like to ask three questions on the consent calendar? Now. I'll open it to the public. Would any member of the public like to pull a consent? An item from the consent calendar? If so, please raise your virtual hand. No hands raised. I'll close uh questions and um pulling items from the consent calendar. So I would be looking for a motion. Move to approve the consent calendar.
A second though.
We have a motion in a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, council member Lawrie?
Yes.
Council member Turner?
Yes.
Council member Craig?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wathember?
Yes.
And Mayor Mecha.
I motion carries. With that, we'll move to public hearings. And we've got unfinished business, which is introduction waiver, the first reading of ordinance number NS Dad two thirty-four. And ordinance of the city council of the city of Monte Sereno amending section ten dot oh one dot oh two zero, which is definition of specific terms. Um I've been asked to read a request into the meeting. Um and I would prefer to do that before we go into the staff report. Uh because it's it's relevant and it would would save time. So the. A former mayor, uh Liz Lawler asked me to read the following to the rec- record at tonight's meeting. And she says, due to other commitments, I am I am unable to attend this meeting in person. Accordingly, I ask the council, please continue item number one under unfinished business on tonight's agenda. To a future date so that the full analysis requested by Mayor Mekachak at the last meeting can be presented to council. Council thoughtfully discussed this item last fall. And not only did the majority of council vote to keep the pools as quote structural coverage close quote. And clarify definitions within our code. The site and architectural commission recommended and affirmed the same action to council with a unanimous five zero vote. As I mentioned in the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three coun- twenty twenty-two council meeting. I believe that removing swimming pools from structural coverage requires a full examination of compensating square footage elsewhere. To prevent excessive coverage that could alter our neighborhoods and have negative environmental impacts. Having the full analysis of the change in the definition of structural coverage with changes, if any, to impervious coverage. And limits would enable council to make a better and fully informed decision for our city and our residents, whatever that decision may be. And address ahead of time any potential negative impacts such a decision may have. So I believe that what uh she's asking for is that we continue this item. And uh I. Would like to say that we made two motions that were passed at the last meeting. And the second motion that is referred to. Uh by Ms. Lawler refers to doing an analysis and that analysis has not been done. And I believe we should continue this item without spending more time on it until that analysis is completed.
I I I I would agree. But I I think you spent enough time on it because you don't need to repeat anymore. The motion that we passed wanted to do it, you know, basically getting.
Oh, okay, okay.
And and you started on it. Let's get the staff reported. Who is it reporting for the vote?
Okay.
The staff.
Uh other comments by council members?
Well, you want to start with what?
Just just a second. I'd like to hear the other council members.
I fully uh agree with um former former mayor Lawler's uh analysis that. We I'd like to see the analysis, the consequences of our decision to change the ordinance. Uh I've seen the the new ordinance. I understand the new ordinance. But I don't understand the consequences of it. So I'd like to see the analysis of the consequence.
And I agree with council member Walshhammer. We did two motions and I think that they were supposed to be. Presented to us together so that we can have a full analysis of what the effect of this vote would be. I would also say that for the members of the public who came here to speak on this item tonight, that they should be allowed to speak and then we can continue the item after that. So that will also have their input. Um do you believe that we should hear the full staff report? I don't think we can hear the full staff report. Okay, um I'll solicit opinion from council member Turner.
I I think what we should do is listen to what count- uh former council member Lufo is gonna say. To get, you know, uh the decision because we we voted on this previously. So I think it would be good for him to s- to speak to it, but uh we should look at what we're voting tonight and go ahead with it. Thank you.
All right, uh finally, I'd like to ask the acting city attorney. Um if we are obligated to hear the staff report. Prior to considering whether we should uh continue this item to a future meeting. Could you uh provide comments, please?
So the council could could make a motion and have it seconded for continuance of this item to a future council meeting. Without hearing from staff, although I would add that staff. Uh I've I've reviewed staff's presentation for tonight and they're going to speak to some of this. Analysis that's being discussed by the council right now. So it's. I would recommend that you give staff an opportunity to address some of the comments that have been made about the analysis. Prior to considering a motion to continue, you can always hear from staff. Open it up to public comment on the issue of continuance and then make a motion to continue if it's supported by the council.
Thank you. As mayor, I will take your your counsel and I will ask staff. Uh with that as a background to provide a staff report, please. And then after that, I'm gonna open public comment on continuance only, just so that we're all prepared in advance. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um good evening, Mayor, council members. I am Diana Perkins, the city planner. And this item was originally brought up at the August second, twenty twenty-two city council meeting. Where the council directed staff to schedule an item for a future agenda for the city council to discuss the municipal code definition of a structure. And if swimming pools and spas should be removed from the definition. This was in response to comments raised at a code enforcement appeal hearing, which was also he- held on August second. The city council discussed this issue at their September sixth and November fifteenth meetings. At the November fifteenth meeting, the city council directed staff. To draft an ordinance to update the definition of a structure for clarification purposes. But to keep the swi- swimming pools and spas in the definition. The site and architectural commission reviewed that ordinance at their January fourth meeting. And recommended that the city council adopt that ordinance with a five zero vote. At the city council meeting on March seventh, the city council voted to not approve. The draft ordinance and directed staff to return with a revised ordinance. That removes swimming pools from the definition of the structure and from the structural coverage calculations. And that is the ordinance that is before you tonight. The Monteserino zoning code has several requirements that effectively limit the size of individual buildings and the overall square footage on a lot. Including a maximum size to the main house, a maximum size for each accessory structure. And the overall structural coverage that is allowed. At present, the structural coverage is the sum of the square footage of all structures on a lot, including pools and spas. If adopted, the draft ordinance before the council tonight would remove swimming pools from the structural coverage calculation. The effective result would be a possible increase in the square footage of other structures on the property. As the area of the pool would no longer be included in the calculation of structural coverage. However, as previously noted, additional zoning standards remain that also limit the square footage of each building. Based on the zoning district and the lot size. If the draft ordinance were adopted, the definition of impervious coverage would also be altered. To ensure that swimming pools and spas remain counted against the impervious coverage limits. Impervious coverage is calculated by summing the area of the structural coverage. Along with other decks, driveways, patio, patios and other paving that is impervious. Removing swimming pools from the structural coverage calculation would not result in any change to the overall impervious coverage allowed on a lot. Additionally, there are specific setbacks that are required for pools and spas. Based on the zoning code that require pools and spas to be at least ten to twelve feet away from property lines, depending on the zone's district. Um based on these restrictions, there is likely no need to make other significant changes to impervious coverage limits. To ensure adequate absorption of water into the ground, as was discussed at the last council meeting. Additionally, producing existing impervious coverage limit would result in the creation of more illegal non-conforming properties. Which would need to be further studied before being implemented. At this time, staff is not recommending further changes to the impervious coverage limits. Beyond what is set forth in the ordinance before council tonight. So staff was recommending that the city council introduce and wait the reading, the first reading of ordinance number NS two thirty-four. That concludes the staff report and I'll answer any question.
Thank you. Um I see that city manager Leon- Leon Artis would like to say something. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would also like to add to the city planner's comments that. The discussion stayed focused on the agenda item before you uh in the ordinance language. Um and not deviate towards the hearing that we have scheduled at a future time about the swimming pool, the administrative hearing.
Thank you. Um I'll ask one question relating to the continuance. Ms. Perkins. I believe it was clear that council wanted to have a full analysis done. Including examples of the changes to impervious coverage and how the changes to structural coverage. Would impact that by removing swimming pools. And that analysis was not done. Could you comment on that, please?
So at the um last city council meeting, there were two um separate motions that were made. The first motion um being to return, directing staff to return with the ordinance that is before council tonight. Friendly amendment had been made to that motion to make it the return of the ordinance contingent upon the additional analysis. And that was not, if I recall properly, not accepted by the legal promotion. So then there was a second separate motion for that analysis. But it was not. Staff's understanding that they were required to be um concurrent.
Thank you. Um I would like now to open public comment on the continue. On the request for the continuance of this item to a future meeting. With the analysis that was described previously. If any member of the public uh would like to make a comment on that. Please raise your virtual hand and or approach the podium, please.
We do have someone.
Uh we've got a a virtual speaker?
Yes. So would you like to?
Yes, so I'll have the virtual speaker. And then I'll have the gentleman in the audience here in the front row and then uh. Former Mayor Lufo in the back row. That will be the order uh of the first three comments and please limit your comments to continuance. Not to the substance of the item. Go ahead, please.
Stanley?
Hi, hi. First, I just wanted to thank um the city council, um the previous city council for all the deliberate thoughts around this and also for Diana, for all the work that she's done on this. I know it's been going for for a while, but she's done such great work. Um with regards to the continuance, my understanding of the request for more analysis is what would be the impact of this ordinance upon changes to things like the watershed and um. Watershed and analogous impacts. I think Ms. Perkins's analysis is actually pretty accurate. Under the current statute ordinance, which states that swimming pools are part of structural coverage, they are also part of impervious coverage. So currently swimming pools count towards the uh impervious coverage rates. If we move swimming pools outside of structural coverage, they will still be considered part of impervious coverage.
Going to interrupt you and ask you to speak to the continuance or not?
No, I think I sorry, uh with Mr. Mayor, I think I am speaking to the continuance because I'm trying to argue that the analysis as requested has already been done. So the reason why I believe the analysis has been done is under the current ordinance. The current ordinance in effect right now, swimming pools count as structural coverage, which counts under impervious coverage. Under the proposed ordinance, swimming pools will not count under structural coverage, but will continue to count under impervious coverage. Therefore, impervious coverage by swimming pools will remain the same under the old and the new. Um and the new ordinance. If we're concerned about the watershed, I think her analysis is pretty clear. This will have no impact on the watershed. Because impervious coverage has not changed between the old law, the old ordinance and proposed ordinance. If there is something that you do want to consider, it's the fact that swimming pools used to be part of structural coverage, but will be removed from structural coverage. So if there needs to be analysis done, that should be analysis done to revise the limits on structural coverage. The current proposal, the current law ordinance, the new proposal does not change the actual impervious coverage rates. Swimming pools are part of impervious coverage under both proposals. Therefore, I don't think there really is any analysis that needs to be done on the watershed since there is no change according to the watershed. If there are any changes, the considerations should be changed to structural coverage. If swimming pools are moving from structural coverage to impervious coverage and we need to revise the structural coverage limits. That would be my analysis and therefore if they want a continuance, the analysis should be rejected, not at impervious coverage, but at structural coverage.
Thank you for your comments. I believe that I said the second speaker would be from the front row. Please approach the podium.
Next to your name.
I've got some copies. Hi, Stanley. It's Michael Benison here.
Please direct your comments to council.
Mayor, council. I'd like to hand out uh just as a matter of record. What we've gone through so far and this does not include.
No, I staff report. Does this deal with continuance?
Yes.
Okay, make your case for continuance or not?
Thank you. Michael Benison.
I do now.
So uh with regard to continuance, let me start with that. I'm gonna object completely to any further. Uh continuance with regard to this matter and the foundation of argument is um essentially. The lexical semantics, the language in the building code, the municipal code is perfectly clear. And I addressed that early on with my original appeal with regard to this matter. And it's been completely ignored. And uh so I've gone further. We'll cover that in just a moment. Um. Subsequent to the original meeting, I've reached out to Stanley and Karen, the new homeowners. That's a separate matter. Right now we're talking about code. But I haven't communicated everything with them. Uh I did circumvent a letter to Sean.
Please direct your comment.
Sean's in the room. Sean, I'm talking to Sean.
No, you you address council.
Okay, so I I addressed. Concerns with uh with Sean was a council member at the time. Um. And those concerns were specific and they were all relative to semantics, axioms, foundation of arguments. And the disparity between an opinion and what is referred to as a corroborative fact. And what is referred to as a cooperative fact, so the language is very specific. And we started out, um it it it's been a little rough, but if we just focus on the code and put everything else aside. Uh I'd like to address council to the second page.
Does this have to do with?
Yes, it does. As a foundation of argument, it has to do with continuance predicated upon someone's misunderstanding. Of lexical semantics, this is the language in the existing code and I want to be specific. So K, coverage structural. Means the area measured in a horizontal plane covered by all buildings or other structures on a parcel or property or lot. I've uh highlighted, as the case may be excluding. Features permitted to extend beyond the walls of a building or other structure by any other provision of this chapter. Now, so we're we're trying to. Be clear when it comes to structural covered structure, we're talking about habitable space, we're talking about doors and windows. And we're talking about square footage, now the foundation of argument is that all professionals. All licensed professionals, assessors, architects, licensed builders, building officials. All know and recognize without. Argument, that's an axiom, it's a known. It's a known fact.
Please, please finish your sentence and then your.
So the point is that uh swimming pools are categorically accessory structures. They're not habitable structures, they don't have doors and windows. Somehow.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, in addition.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm not through.
Your time is up.
Two minutes. This is, this is.
I'm I'm sorry, those are the rules in this in these chambers, I believe we've got another speaker after you. On continuance.
Thank you, council members, I'll I'll have to contact you each individually with regard to this matter, it's not a three man.
You.
Argument.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen, ladies, um addressing just the issue of the unintended consequences. Uh and the uh issue of uh continuance, I think the continuance is absolutely called for. I did the math and I did it on an envelope before I came here tonight. And we are talking about adding four hundred thousand square feet of structural coverage in Monte Serena. According to this new ordinance, the way it's drafted, that is forty five thousand square foot homes of coverage. And that analysis has not been done professionally, it's been done by me on a napkin. But I'm concerned about this, because when I was on this council, I took a pledge. To do no harm and to preserve the rural character of this community and that is not what's happening. There are serious unintended consequences of an ordinance that out of the goodness of everyone here's hearts. They want to do for one homeowner, I get it, I'm very sorry about how this has come about. But the decision you're making is important for the next twenty or thirty years in Monte Serena. So let's get the analysis, let's get the continuance, let's make the right decision for all of the residents of Monte Serena, thank you.
Thank you. If there's any member of the public that would like to make a comment on continuance, please raise your virtual hand. No hands are raised, I will close public comment. And bring it back to council, uh I believe that uh our city attorney uh. Has recommended that at this point in time. We could make a decision whether to continue this tonight, or sorry, whether. To continue this item to a different meeting or. To proceed with this item on the agenda.
I I do have some thoughts. Any questions? Uh I I know you're you're framing it as a post, just a continuation matter. But properly uh continuation request should be considered after the matter has been thoroughly discussed. Rather than just trying to, you know, jump in front of it. Staff report was really clear, the previous coverage already covers the issue of what what you're more concerned about. The staff report already covers it, so you don't need a continuance on it. If you want to just continue it, because of my, you know, because some people are interested in continuing it, that's a different issue. But I don't think it's necessary and I think you spend enough time on this issue that you should probably rethink any more on the council's time. Uh it also, it just doesn't make any sense, all you're trying to do is clear up a definition as to whether. Uh swimming pool is considered covered or not, and it's not, it's not an umbrella, it's not covered. Uh the previous coverage, the motion, just to be clear on the record, last time you made a motion, commend my motion and I said. No, I will not consider it as part of that motion, but you can, staff can continue doing a report on it. It has nothing to do with defining the structured coverage issue. Stop and do their report and we'll come back and say, okay, we need to expand our information issue, so it was a separate motion and the reason I specifically said it separately is because. We need to keep this common sense definition, it doesn't, we're the only city in the whole state of California properly that thinks a swimming pool is a structured coverage. Let's get away from it, do your previous definition and as constantly a former mayor, uh you know, did his analog analysis. I think our planning commissioner would come back to the same and say, okay, we need to increase our definition of impervious coverage. And that's what we'll do, because you know, we can't have four hundred thousand square foot of housing being built. It'll be covered in the previous coverage definition, because if it's in the previous coverage, you can't put that structure covered in any way, so that's analysis that is going to get done. And uh you know, but at least let's have a common sense definition on it.
Other comments by council members? No. Well then I would entertain a motion to uh. If council wishes to continue this item. At a subsequent meeting. I move that we continue this item to a further meeting.
My second thought.
We have a motion and a second, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Craig.
Yes.
Council member Logi.
No.
Council member Turner.
No.
Vice Mayor Walshimer.
Yes.
And Mayor Megachuck.
I, motion carries. Just so that it's clear, I think we should give direction to staff so that we don't go through this again. And perhaps uh former mayor Loufold could provide some input. Uh to staff directly on his understanding and his analysis, but I think that we're directing staff. To come back with an analysis of. Scenarios where if if a swimming pool was included in structural coverage. And then it was removed by from structural coverage. What the impact would be on impervious coverage. Because it would allow more structural coverage. So. If you could do that and coordinate to some extent with former mayor Loufold, that would be good. Um I believe we've got a a hand raised by our city attorney, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out that the minutes from the March seventh meeting were in the agenda package for approval tonight and the council did approve those minutes. And uh there is the motion made by yourself, Mr. Mayor. And I'm wondering if you want to confirm that 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 direction. Is still appropriate, or if you want to make an amendment to that direction. And then provide more specific timing direction on when you'd like to see the ordinance. And uh that analysis come back to the council.
Thank you for identifying that. I saw, and I'll I'll just respond, I saw that analysis. Being part and parcel of the. Ordinance coming back. So the ordinance would have to have the analysis done. So that the council could and the public could understand the implications and. Obviously, it's not perfectly clear how it will affect. The. The environment and we in underscoring that, we've got written correspondence from a former council member. That was in the twenty twenty-two meetings, we've had a former former mayor. Uh also there, we have three people on council that. Would like to see that analysis and we've got two people that don't and we've got members of the public that are split, so. I I guess. I would like to see a robust analysis so that it's persuasive one way or another. Um did I clarify that council or? Do we need to have further discussion on that?
I would defer to staff if they understand the direction and that then then that's appropriate.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I think your previous motion covers what you wanted, so rather than confusing them more. They can just look at the previous motion in the last time, I think that code is what you want.
So does to summarize, the analysis and the motion come back to us at a future meeting.
Right, so this motion and the structure coverage comes back. And the analysis of the purpose coverage and how this motion would affect that. Or be affected by the previous coverage, which I understand is not having any effect, but we need to make sure that that's clear.
So I do have one question and this may involve the city attorney also. Um. So staff has begun working on the analysis, um I. Will confirm with the city manager, but I do believe. We're shooting or bringing, we're on schedule to bring that back to the April eighteenth city council meeting. Um what I'm not clear about is if there is, if. I'm wondering if we should bring the analysis and ask for direction from council about an ordinance amendment, rather than bringing an ordinance. With which may need, if there are significant changes, we need to go back to the site, not architectural commission for that amendment.
So I'll respond to that logically, in my mind logically, it may not be logical, but. What I hear you saying is you want to do the, you would be willing to do the analysis, but if the analysis indicates that. Changes could be considered, then you'd like to have a gap between coming back with that analysis and actually putting forth. Uh an ordinance, did I hear that correctly?
Correct.
Okay.
I agree.
Hold on, go ahead, but it sounds like the gap will include a stop at the. Site and architectural commission, yes, is that what you were suggesting?
Um and this is where I would ask for some assistance perhaps from the city attorney, I believe if the ordinance would be. Broader than what the site and architectural commission has already reviewed. Then um procedurally it would go to them for a new recommendation.
Right, go ahead, uh thank you. Yeah, I I I think we should just move it along, you know, some of us will like what the result is and some of us won't, so. Uh you've got an ordinance regarding structured coverage before us. And the question is whether we approve that or not at the next meeting would depend on what the previous analysis you do. So bring in the previous analysis, put it in front of us. And the structured coverage ordinance can stay as it is. And then based on your analysis of how the previous coverage thing affects us. We either approve the structured coverage definition or we allow. Or we'll postpone it to that point and say, okay, we need some more work on it, but at least let's. You know, let's get all the analysis you want on the purpose coverage, if you have it and it looks like changing the definition of structure coverage will not affect. The concern we have based on the groundwater issues or four thousand square foot extra uh income. Then we can do that, but I think at least this this ordinance can stay, but the previous coverage analysis would impact whether the council approved it or not. The way I would like to get it.
Okay. And I'll remember Craig and. If I I think if if there's any questions, they can come to council members directly, we don't have to pass out what this analysis looks like. Only at council meetings, correct? I would defer to our city attorney on that one.
Yeah, so we we would, we would definitely bring this back to a council meeting, um.
Well, I I guess what I'm saying is we don't have to. Define every single piece of the analysis inside of a council meeting, but I think that we should be able to give direction. To staff in between meetings, like they could call us and say, what do you want to see in this report, what would make you happy? To give you the information you need to make an important decision and that we can do that with one-on-one meetings with staff, that we don't have to do that. Inside of a council meeting, correct?
So yes, staff can have one-on-one meetings with council members to answer questions of individual council members. But they can't have meetings with one-on-one meetings with council members to develop a general consensus.
Correct.
So to answer your question, yes, one-on-one meetings could occur so long as we don't commit. Uh a Brown Act violation through serial meetings by developing a general consensus.
Okay.
So and then. Just to answer um the the question earlier about timing, it's up to the council, it sounds like the general consensus was. To have these items come back at the same time and if there is an uh an issue that's brought forward in the analysis that. It and the council decides they need to do something further or continue the item, the ordinance again, that's perfectly acceptable as well.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, and one of the things that we spoke about when we made the second motion were examples, so for example. What does the changes that we're looking to make due to a house in. An R one eight zone, a thousand square foot house, does it turn it into a. Two thousand square foot house, is it turning into a fifteen hundred square foot house, does it take a three thousand square foot house and an R one eight turn it into a thirty eight hundred? Where so so is though to be some of the. This is the direction or the comments that you're giving to staff, correct, okay, okay, um. Staff, are you are you okay with this now? I mean, these are the questions that I've been asked personally, you know, from some of the people that I've been talking to about this ordinance and. And it's it's hard for them to get a visual um of of what this ordinance is actually doing because as um. As it's been discussed, we want to maintain the rural character of Monte Serena and we want to make sure that we make the right decision here. Okay, uh yes, go ahead, uh city manager Leonardi.
Thank you, Mayor Megcheck, um with the blessing of the city attorney. Um perhaps procedurally, we can have each council member. And mail their email their comments to city planner Perkins uh without discussion among. Each other before emailing those comments, so we can tabulate all those and bring those back in the report.
I I think what what um council member Craig was indicating. Was he wanted to make sure that the analysis was robust and meeting. And answering the questions that the individual council members had, so when it came back, there wouldn't be a two and pro. On the analysis that that if if council member Craig wanted to see something and. Council member Alahi wanted to see something, it would it would be in there in the analysis. So we wouldn't have to go back and forth again, that we're we're done and that's what I mean by the word robust.
We should also take a look at the former mayor Loufold again, so that's that's part of it.
Okay, so with that, um I think we've got uh we've got direction on that, so. Item number one has been continued. And we're on to new business, which is discuss installation of a neighborhood incident incident, a man post. N I C P. Uh do we have a back report on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Mccheck and city council members. Before you this evening for consideration is the discussion of the installation of. What is referred to as a neighborhood incident command post, N I C P. For the community emergency response team, which is also known as CERT for short. This item was brought up and put on the agenda by council member Turner at our last public meeting. And staff was approached last November by a member of the community who was also a CERT member. Who began a discussion with staff. Uh about exploring the possibility of installing an N I C P at. The Monte Sereno city site where we are sitting this evening. And staff uh joined that individual and. Did a field trip out to the Dave's Avenue School where there is currently an N I C P located. And we evaluated that, the contents and the size of that N I C P. Staff subsequently went and evaluated the N I C P that is located at the Los Gatos Library. With CERT. I guess you would call community outreach coordinator Jackie Rose with the Los Gatos Monte Sereno Police Department. But is also in charge of CERT and organizing all of the CERT teams and um. Ms. Rose had provided a list of equipment that goes inside the N I C P to myself. As well as we discussed where a shed which can contain the contents of an N I C P. It could be procured and provided me with a contact where I could procure a um. Search shed. While all that was occurring, there was the continued discussion of the community room. Being installed at the civic center. And something from the clean water program, which is included in the staff report and is quite a. Long acronym, but it stands for the Santa Clara Valley Urban Runoff Pollution Prevention Program, S C V U R P P. And this is a project that would uh require the removal. Of the entire asphalt parking lot at Monte Sereno City Hall. And um if we were to uh install this certain. N I C P in that parking lot somewhere uh. Assuming that council finds merit in the idea, it would have to be uninstalled. So I just thought with the civic center, community room project, as well as the potential of the parking lot. Removal, it might be um prudent for council. To consider the merits of this idea and discuss the merits of this idea, but. Probably not implement the installation of N I C P until we have a clear direction on these other two projects. On at city hall and um. That concludes my input in addition to what is written in the staff report. And I am available for your questions, thank you.
All right, um. Do we, what I'd like to do is ask staff some questions, have council members do that. And I'd like to open it up to the public or comment, and then I'd like to bring it back to council or or comment. So with that process, just so we're clear. Um do we have questions of staff before I open it for public comment? I see council member Turner, you have your hand raised. Uh please ask your questions of staff, thank you.
Uh thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask questions. I have a question for the city manager, Steve Leonardis. Um are you aware that this project was approved by the previous city council? With money budgeted in fiscal year twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. In the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. And as far as I know, that this money is still in the emergency services account.
Thank you, council member Turner, uh yes, I believe that is a correct. Analysis of the funding for the project and um according to the staff report. We couldn't come in below that twelve thousand five hundred dollar figure, um it really just. Becomes a question of the logistics of the project, not necessarily the funding of the project.
May I ask another question, please?
Go ahead.
Yes, uh in your report, you say that um. The shed is a ten by twelve. And the uh actual shed from the police department is a ten by ten. So can you explain how you got the ten by twelve, please?
Thank you for your question, council member Turner, so. When I visited the N I C P at the Los Gatos Library location. It was recommended by Jackie Rose that the shed be a ten by twelve size and that. Um was the shed's prices that the individual. That she referred me to has provided, which is the information that is provided in the report. So a ten by twelve is a standard size, um. I did not look at a ten by ten size um for sale, um.
So uh may I ask the last question? On your report.
Go ahead, ask another question.
Uh on your report, you have fiscal impact. And you're asking for a ten thousand dollars, is that in addition to the twelve thousand dollars we have already allocated?
No, that would be the price to acquire a ten by twelve shed, which was. A what we call a demo model shed and. For citing and installation potentially in the Monte Sereno parking lot, as was discussed with. The CERT member. Um Monte Sereno CERT member, Agardo Rivera. I hope I pronounced his last name correctly.
Okay, but but we have twelve thousand five hundred. And you said the additional impact is ten thousand, so is that not correct?
In the staff report, it says. If the city council decides to acquire and host an N I C P, the city council should budget ten thousand. For the acquisition and installation. So the figure represents approximately five K for acquiring the shed and five K for citing and installation. Without having the previous budget in front of me from twenty twenty one this evening. Assuming that there was twelve thousand five hundred dollars already budgeted for that shed. The ten thousand dollar figure falls within the purview of that twelve thousand five hundred figure. And that is actually quite a nice figure because that would be essentially like a twenty five percent. You know.
Our finance manager is here and he can actually ask, we can ask him. What the amount is that the previous council approved.
And that is probably a good idea. And in the future, I think it would be a good idea to email these kinds of questions to staff prior to the council meeting. Because these are council, these are questions that staff can easily answer. For council members um and and copy all council members on prior to the meeting.
I did ask staff, you were CC'd on that email. And Mr. Samarana said, yes, the twelve thousand five hundred is budgeted. So maybe you didn't see it, but we have the money, thank you. Thank you.
Other questions of council uh to staff, go ahead, council member Al.
Uh so the budget was there for funding the N I C P. Is a budget there to buy the parking space that it's gonna be using? I mean, land in City Los Gatos costs like six hundred or a thousand dollars square foot. So are you proposing to give away a thousand square foot of land, which would be a hundred thousand dollars for the N I C P, so? Is that a budget? For the city to give you a hundred thousand dollars of land, that's the first question. Uh second question answered with the previous coverage, the parking lot, obviously. Does our city meet the previous standards that are required under the Monte Sereno City Code right now? And i- is that why we need to go back and I guess. Uh spend this money on the S C V U R P P program, is that what that's all about?
Thank you, council member Alahi for your questions, so to answer your first question. The shed footprint of a ten by twelve and surrounding space. For entry into the shed and those types of things would probably uh take up. Two parking places in the city hall lot. And if you think of what the value of that real estate would be, we haven't performed a formal analysis of that. But assuming um the town of Los Gatos places a valuation of about a hundred fifty thousand dollars per parking place. It could be considered a three hundred thousand dollar footprint for the shed if it were in our city hall parking lot. There may be other things to consider, such as the parking requirements for the new community room. That could come into play as well as areas where for public safety vehicles to turn around in the event of a. Fire and such, the whole, you know, master plan of the civic center is or which state. Community room addition and the parking lot project is still under, um I guess. Being developed, so we don't have the answers other than. Your question represents a very interesting, um I guess what we would call gift of space in our. And if you're looking at competed needs for space on a limited site because Monte Sereno only owns this location. Um that is a very proven question to be putting forth to the council for consideration. Regarding um, let me go back to the acronym here, the Santa Clara Valley Urban Runoff. Pollution Protection Program. This is a state law and this was um something that previous city engineer. Jessica Khan was working on going back a couple of years. It's become now that we have to find a point two one acre project to. Um which is essentially the size of our parking lot somewhere in Monte Sereno that the city can do our part to. Uh prevent runoff into the water system, it's part of the clean water program and state mandate. And the city hall parking lot was the only place that we could come up with that our city could potentially do something. And right now we have, I guess you call it. Impervious coverage, we're looking for pervious coverage if I'm using the lingo correctly, um so. Be a different type of asphalt, we have to remove the existing asphalt and flip this in. And I'm not sure what kind of base rock or anything else, I don't wanna get into any of those specifications because I'm not equipped to talk on on those types of levels. But essentially, it's it's kinda like an unfunded mandate um that we have to, we have to do. Did I get too far off your original?
I I understand that, so I guess the two separate things, let's see.
Two separate.
The runoff thing is a separate thing you gotta take care of, you still have an impervious. Coverage problem, you know, with the parking lot and with the city, we are called, what is your code for impervious coverage or not?
To answer your question based on, say, the previous agenda item, I'm not sure what analysis has been done on that. But we can uh get back to you on that, via email or whatnot. And get back to the entire council via email, we'd have to look into the uh. Miss Khan's engineering report, we don't have our engineering staff here to answer that this evening, we're prepared to answer that this evening, I mean, it looks.
Straightforward, there is no, I mean, it's all asphalt, it's all covered.
You'll be replacing. Maybe maybe I could jump in and facilitate this. I'm a member of the West Valley Clean Water Joint Management Authority. And we've got, I believe, a project discussion meeting that's gonna happen. Uh in April. And the the scope of that project that we're mandated to do, every municipality must undertake one project. That's gonna be discussed in that meeting, so we'll have a lot more clarification and in fact, we can report back on that and we. We we could agendize having um the director do it with our city engineer. Do a a presentation or a report on that, but the other thing is the way streets are. Are, um I'm not sure what the right word is, not controlled but regulated, the runoff from a street. That all goes through a permit to take that stormwater and pass it through to the bay. And there's a permit that the city of Monte Sereno has for that. Um. It it gets complicated pretty quickly with the changing rules. But I believe that that the project that's being anticipated is looking at the. Impervious coverage of the parking lot. And determining how to keep that water on our property and have it infiltrate. Into the aquifers, the ground aquifers.
If I might just add one point that I think may have been overlooked. Is the asphalt that is out in the parking lot now will largely remain the same amount of coverage that we have now. So we'd be taking impervious and replacing it with pervious, but it's the same area approximately. Well, I hope that answers your question.
Well, I'm just saying you're gonna have to redo the whole thing, basically have to moan down, I guess, tear it out.
But I I think we wanna get back to the N I C P.
Okay.
Go ahead, uh council member Craig and then council or vice mayor Walter.
Thank you. How many N I C Ps are currently in Monte Sereno? And where are they located at? We do have one.
Thank you for your question, council member Craig, right now, there is just one location at Dave's School. And it is, I believe, a six by eight shed, I'm not mistaken on the dimensions.
Okay, is there any possibility of enlarging that one? Or I guess um I'm just looking at why we would need a second one that's only a few minutes away. From our existing one.
In my correspondence with uh Jackie Rose, um we did discuss locations. There is a map which kind of divides up Los Gatos, Monte Sereno territory into areas. And I believe the next closest location is at uh Saint Mary's Church. Um so I think the idea is to distribute these within the community, throughout the community, I should say. I believe there are thirteen of them now. Um I think more important than potentially adding a second location is getting enough. And I just had a discussion with Ms. Rose the other day about this, getting enough volunteers from Monte Sereno to actually staff the location and. Um work to maintain the location, supply the location, I believe right now. Um there may be a couple more people in the CERT program from Los Reno that will be graduating in May. But according to Ms. Rose, we need about six or eight more CERT volunteers. To actually, if we had another location, to actually be able to make that location useful to the public. Staffing it, maintaining it, running it during the event of an emergency. There was one other idea that could potentially be explored, which is. Close to where we are located, but it is in the town of Los Gatos technically, and it's at the end of Rose Avenue. Which is the Church of Latter Day Saints, potentially locating a CERT location there. I'm not here to add new information, which is not in the staff report, but this is something that came in up in discussion. Should um the N I C P not be located. Um at Monte Sereno City Hall by the council. So there are other possibilities on other lands um that are not our location. There also was some discussion going on. And originally, my thought was, when we were looking at the community room, that there could be. You know, a closet or an area where supplies can be uh included there. That can be accessible easily, maybe from the Rose Avenue side parking place over there. Because I think the idea, one of the ideas which would make this successful is accessibility of the site. And uh convenience of accessibility. And uh it was explored that could be incorporated into the community room somehow. And I'm not certain if that is uh a possibility at this point in time um either.
Okay, is it just one of my last ideas or uh questions was. The county is proposing to rebuild the station over off of Highway nine. Is there any possibility of that being modified a little bit so that they could host a? A N I C P that would seem a very logical place to have one of those.
Thank you for your question, and I did speak with the police, excuse. Thank you for your question. And I did speak with the police, excuse me, the the Santa Clara County Fire Chief uh about that location a couple of months ago. And originally, the idea was to tear that down and turn it into a really big remodel superstation like what they did off of Redwood Estates. But I think they've moved away from that idea and now they're looking at something uh more cost effective, which is remodeling the existing facility and then upgrading and updating it. But I did not have the conversation at the time because it wasn't part of the discussion or even the thought process to uh include a a cert location at that station. But that certainly could be addressed. I could reach out to the buyer chief and see if uh if they'd be willing to allow that location uh for use by search.
Okay, thank you. Council member, or sorry, Vice Mayor Walter, you have questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um it's not so much a question, actually, or it's more of a suggestion.
Could, but we, if if it's not a question, we could go to public comment. Oh, we've got council member Turner who's already asked some questions. Is it a comment or a question, council member Turner?
It's a question. I have a question for um city manager Leonardi. Are you aware that when we did, when we talked about this NICP, that this and I, Montes Reno has only one NICP? And how many does Los Catos have? Do you know?
Thank you for your question, council member Turner. I believe Los Catos has thirteen NICPs and Montes Reno has one NICP.
Okay, so this one NICP, when we talked to you about it, do you remember that we wanted an NICP for for fault tolerance? So if we're not able to access the NICP, the only NICP in Montes Reno, then we at least have another NICP uh at City Hall. You remember that?
Well, I do not remember all of the details, but I will say I don't believe that the merits of an NICP um or a a potential second location of an NICP is um potentially unwarranted or not. It's just a matter of potentially citing it, staffing it and maintaining it. And which is also mentioned in the staff report, uh finding the volunteers who will be um basically available to make it successful.
But you're not responsible for monitoring it, right? Is that correct?
Well, the staff of the Montes Reno is not responsible as cert is a second or a separate organization. However, it should be considered um as part of the overall planning process. It it's one of those things, if we build it, will they come? If we provide the location or we help cite the NICP, will it be successful? Will it be staffed? Will it be maintained? Will it be supplied? All those operations are not part of the city of Montes Reno's obligation. The ask was, in the staff report, should it be located at Montes Reno City Hall? And that's what we're discussing this evening. Um and if council desires to locate it here, then staff is looking for direction on that. And then we can consider getting it done.
Okay, but we were talking about a shed that's a hundred and twenty square feet and we're proposing to put it at the back with the trashcans. Right?
I think we're getting away, I'd I'd like to open public comment, council member Turner, and then we can bring it back to council and have a discussion. That's
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
Okay, one more brief comment if I may, Mr. Mayor, since council member Turner brought up the location near where our trash area is now. We also have to take take into consideration neighbors and those types of things as well, if we were excited.
Okay, thank you. I would like to now open public comment. Any member of the public, if you'd like to make a comment on this, please raise your virtual hand. Or if you're in the city council chambers, please come to the podium. We've got two. Uh I will let you uh allow one person to speak.
Can you hear us? Yes, you have. Yes, we can hear. You have three minutes.
Hi, that's why my name is Eduardo Lover. Um and I'm the, one of the two cert leaders for the NICP in Dave's. And uh thank you, Stephen Rowena, for working on this. We appreciated it. Um yeah, yeah, John, first thinking about uh that you may have some questions, so I want to be available. But then uh with your comments, I I prompted prompted me to make you some comments to you. I think that the the main decision, eh moving a shed is pretty easy and it may be a few hundred bucks, let's say a thousand bucks. And it's probably going to be a couple of years, maybe even more before all the working city hall finished. So the bottom line is, if you want to, if if you think that having that NICP uh in case there's an emergency in the next two, three years, is worth it, is worth a thousand bucks or so. That's really it. Because if then you choose to use the space for something else, it's very easy to move it. And there are quite a few locations that could be considered. They talk about the fire station. That's very interesting because the Montes Reno is part of two uh eh areas and only one has an NICP. The second one eh starts uh in Quito, going towards Saratoga. And it starts, and it covers also all the the Montes Reno south of Highway nine. All that does not have any NICP at all. So this new NICP will service that area that doesn't have one. And um and so potentially, once you have a couple of fears while you finish to all the work in city hall to figure out another location in that area. And then let's see, if I forget anything. Uh um so that's the main reason why a second, because there's a lot of failure that is not covered. I think I covered everything that was important. Thank you. And if you have any question, I'm here. Keep listening. Thanks. Bye bye.
Thank you for your comment. Uh do we have another speaker?
Yes. I have two. So I have Stanley and then um one and then a Marco. Stanley first. Stanley? Can you hear us?
I can, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Well, I want to again thank city council, city manager for thinking so much about this. Um I don't have full visibility, so I'll just give you my opinion for whatever it's worth. And please, city council, who has more visibility than I do, please take it for what it's worth. I'm actually really in support of having an NICP and having it in Montes Reno. Um I know the city manager looked at NICPs in Dave's Avenue and the Los Catos Library, but they are fundamentally in Los Catos and not part of Montes Reno. I do, having lived here just for a few months, I will be honest, I am a little bit um, I don't want to say frightened, but I am a little bit um. How do I describe it? I've noticed that actually the roadways through Monte Serena are pretty limited. So we have Route nine and most recently, you probably remember since it was near um City Hall, that a tree fell over, fell over on Route nine. It blocked Route nine traffic and went in through Rose Avenue and down Andrews Ave, gave us a little bit of traffic because I live near there, but I'm happy to uh happy to take a slight inconvenience if it can help benefit the the city and the neighborhood. But what it really struck me was that there really aren't that many roads that go through Monte Serena. It's really easy to get checkpoints, to get choke points. And so that kind of does make me a little bit worried about the events of big disasters, earthquakes primarily. But even like these big windstorms that take down trees that just very, very little can really isolate a lot of neighborhoods. So I I would really love to have an NICP just so that we could have a little extra layer of security. I mean, from my perspective, I think all levels of government, I think citizen resident safety is among the most important priorities for um for governments. Again, I don't have full visibility. You guys have more full visibility, but I'm just gonna give you my opinions. And then I guess the last thing is I understand that there's like deliberations about when we should do this and there's good reasons why we should wait for new construction and things like that. But one thing that I do have a little bit anxiety about is like, no, earthquakes are a really big deal here. Um and I know that in nineteen eighty-nine, the Loma Prieta earthquake caused a lot of havoc and I don't think we had power. I wasn't here during that time. But I don't think we had the power for several, several weeks. And a lot of my neighbors are a little bit more elderly and I think it would be a little bit of a struggle for them to have to go through that again. So to the extent that you guys can, um I really appreciate your work and your thoughts on this, but I would, I would give my um my support for what it's worth to trying to get an NICP established somewhere in Monte Serena um and as quickly as possible. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. You said there's another person, another two. I'll let you promote them.
Can you hear me?
You have three minutes.
Okay, uh mine will be short. Um I was just reading the staff report and it indicated that uh the NICPs should be strategically placed. And I was just wondering, would it make sense to see on a map the location of the NICPs in Saratoga and in Los Catos? And use that to try to figure out the optimal place for an NICP in Montes Reno. And maybe it is City Hall. I don't know. I'm just wondering if that might be useful. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your insightful comment. We have another public speaker?
I do have Eduardo, but he did.
He's spoken once. I'm sorry, yes. Is there someone else?
No one else.
No one else.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I just wanted to, maybe we should check with the first speaker, Eduardo. Uh I'm sorry, I thought I wrote down his last name, but I did not. Um to make sure that there's not somebody else in the room that wants to speak.
Thank you. Um Mr. Eduardo, uh we limit speakers to speaking once or three minutes. And if there's someone else in the room with you that is using your microphone, we will allow them to speak. And uh unfortunately, you can't speak twice on the on the same item.
Yeah, it was just a correction on what I said. The the other NICP area starts at Dave's, not at Quito. That was all I wanted to say. So it's a larger.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. Repeat it once again.
Uh that the, I I was correcting my previous statement about the geographic area of the of the region that does not have an ACP today. I said it start at Quito, but it was a mistake. It starts in on at Dave's, so it's even bigger.
Okay, thank you. Uh with that, um I will close public comment and bring it back to council. I think we need to make sure that we're uh meeting our our request. And that is, staff, we are to discuss the installation of a neighborhood incident command post. And for the Community Emergency Response Team, staff recommends that Monte Serena Council discuss installation of an NICP per cert. So I'll start this discussion now, having heard the questions and the answers. I believe that this is very important for the city of Monte Serena, as I mentioned with the uh uh report by the uh Monte Serena, or sorry, Los Catos Monte Serena Police, that public safety is paramount in Monte Serena. And I and I do believe and support that. Um I also believe that emergencies don't follow municipal boundaries, that you have to look at this. As one of our speakers said on a map, where are the NICPs existing? Uh where are the existing NICPs and where's the need for them? And we need to do that. We have, we need to have that understanding rather than um, you know, let's just do it. Uh and I do not believe in analysis paralysis as well. But we have, we also have to be aware of other items that arise, such as the parking lot issue that that um uh Mr. Leonardi's mentioned. Um so those, those, maybe I'm just explaining what I, what I heard. And these are all competing interests. The other thing is, I made a number of inquiries with the chief of police on an NICP. I made an inquiry with uh Ms. Jackie Rose on actually visiting an NICP and understanding it. Uh and then she raised the may um re dry run uh of that cert is gonna go through and she invited me to that. I think what what I would like to do is visit the Saint Mary's NICP and really understand it, because I end up also the Dave's Ave. And then uh also really understand what the alternatives are. And if we, and I spoke with with the chief of police on on several items. One of the things that she said was, and I think Mr. Leonardi alluded to this. She said, if you build it, will they come, being the volunteers and and uh Chief Field emphasized that you need to be able to staff this with volunteers. So there's no point in having something that's an idle facility that that can't be staffed. And she believes that that the priority should be on training uh potential cert members. So that's one. And then the other thing that I discussed with her, and I think Mr. Leonardi, you mentioned this, that we could, there may be a possibility of including some type of a cabinet, not a full ten by ten or ten by twelve building shed, but on the, on the west side of the community center. And I had our architect take a look at what would be feasible. And what it seems like is that there may be an opportunity to put a cabinet there that is controlled by a combination lock, so you don't need a key to go into the building. That at any point in time, a volun- a certain person could go there, have the combination and get immediate access to certain critical supplies. One of the most important would be radios. So that person is there getting deployed, they're in communication with an a full NICP, whether it be at Saint Mary's or at Dave's Ave, which I believe are the two closest ones. And then uh that requires, the radios require a trickle charger and we could provide uh an electrical outlet in that cabinet. So it's, while it's not a full NICP, it it could be a jumping off point or deploying someone fast, so that they don't have to go to either Saint Mary's or to go to Dave's Ave and then go south of Highway nine. So I just wanted to to explain that those were my observations and my comments. And I, I really feel the need to understand where we're gonna put something. But most importantly, we need to have volunteers. So I invite comments from other council members. Go ahead, council member Craig. Thank you. I am also in support of an NICP. I think that the more emergency resources we can get our hands on when the time is necessary, the better. And I probably should have asked this during the question, but does an NICP have to be on public property?
It does not.
Okay.
Jackie Rose did mention to me that in Los Catos, they have a few of them that are on private property. Those tend to be less accessible than the ones that are on public spaces that are technically accessible to everybody all the time.
Okay, great. Thank you. So again, I think it would be great to know where these are already in both Los Catos and well, we know where the one in Monte Serena is, is at that Dave's Avenue. But I think that we should also find out if there would be a certain member who would like to host one of these at their house. First of all, they're going to need to keep the equipment fresh. They're gonna probably need to get in there and test it. And if somebody's standing or somebody's living right next to one, they're going to probably take a lot better care of it. And it's probably gonna have much kindlier maintenance than it would be for somebody to have to come down to a remote location. As as much as people say that they're going to do these things, life gets in the way and hey, you know what? I gotta do this. Oh, I gotta do that cert thing. But you know, you know what? I'll do it. I'll do it next week. And hey, all I gotta do is walk fifty feet to my shed over here and I'll make sure that all the radios are charged, that the chainsaws have gas in them and so on and so forth, and flashlights all work and everything else.
chainsaws have gas in them and so on and so forth, and flashlights all work and everything else. And I would say that we should add that to, to, I think, our, um, our search and find out if anybody's interested in hosting one. And if anybody would need a, a variance to put one of these things under property, I think we should issue one without, without any second thought to it. And just put that as, as part of the, as part of the solution that we should investigate. Put it as part of an alternative.
May I say something? I mean, I've been waiting for.
Just ho- hold on for just a moment. Are, are you done with your comment?
Yes, I'm done now. Well, you, you asked me a question, did I answer it? Yes, you did. Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, you may, and then, and then we'll go to council member Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I also am fully in support of an NICP, a second NICP. I have two suggestions. Here on the, of the property here, we seem to have three potential projects going on. The community center, NICP, and possibly repaving of the parking lot. Why don't we take a holistic approach and put it all into a single committee? Which could be the, could be the, one of the committees, existing committees. Combine all of them instead of looking at all three separately with possibly conflicting opinions, so let's combine those. That's my first suggestion. The other one is we have a joint police force with Los Gatos and Monte Serena. Why do we have two separate cert organizations? And we combine the two cert organizations into one? Just like our police force, is, doesn't that make a lot more sense?
I think that's rhetorical. I, I thought they weren't one.
And how can we do that?
So, so do we wanna hear comments from council member Turner and then Mister Leon Artis, or do you wanna go first?
It's easier to remember questions on an individual basis and address them. Um, we do only have one cert organization that is technically Los Gatos and Monte Serena. We just don't have a lot of Monte Serena members. I believe Los Gatos has sixty-eight or something cert members. It might be sixty-eight or eighty-six, I'm a little bit dyslexic. And when it came to your question about could we combine, say, the entirety of our location, the parking lot, the community room, and potentially a solution for cert having a site here.
NICP.
NICP. I do believe that is a great idea, and we do have the community room committee already installed. We can expand the charter of that entity to include those other things, because it should be looked at holistically. And one more thing, um, city planner Perkins here reminded me that if it were to go here, we also have to consider setbacks. For instance, as council member Turner described before, if we were to put it over there where our trash cans are stored now, we have to consider you know, necessary setbacks from the neighboring property as well, so we, we just can't place it anywhere we want, exactly.
Great, thank you. Council member Turner, over to you, and I thank you for your patience uh, in, in waiting for us to hear through, uh, uh, city manager Leon Artis. Go ahead, please.
Okay, I, I wanted to, to let you know that there's only one emergency preparedness group for Los Gatos and Monte Serena. Okay? And, and just like what happened in, in December, when they called us to service the community, we were all allocated an NICP for each uh, project lead. Okay, and here's, here's the problem. If we don't have an NICP, that, where there's a parking lot. When people die or people get hurt, we use the parking lot to s- to sort out the people that are hurt on one side and the people that are dead on the other side. And if, if that were in, in a private home, it would be very difficult to do that. Okay, so, so that's one thing. The second thing is that we're talking about a shed. We can install it now, and by the time you're ready with the community center, our cert volunteers have said they will move it for us. And we've done that, we've done that in Los Gatos. We moved the cert sheds from one place to another, so that's not gonna be an issue. The issue here is that Monte Serena residents have to be safe. And with only one NICP, we're not fault tolerant. In the event, event of an emergency, like an earthquake, we had eight earthquakes last week in San Benito County, right? And one NICP in, on Dave's Avenue, that's not enough. Okay, we have to be responsible, like the, the chief said, for the safety of our residents. We can always pick up the shed and move it when you guys wanna do repaving. Alright, so I think you, you need to take a look at this from a different perspective. If you wanna put a fence around it, we don't have to put a fence around it now, we can wait until you guys are ready to put the fence. But at least we have an NICP if an emergency occurs from now until next year, whenever you're ready. Okay, so, so that's, that's, those are my o- opinions. I think you, you guys are, are talking about that you don't understand. Furthermore, uh, residents are not allowed to go inside the NICP. Staff is not allowed to go to the NICP unless you're certified. Because, because the equipment is all in a certain place, it's standardized. And if you move things around, then in an emergency, when you guys aren't there, which, which we don't depend on you, we will go in there and we have to know where everything is. Alright, so staff is not allowed to go into NICP. In fact, the best way to do this is give the money to Jackie Rose. She installs it, right? We, we wait until an, a new agency occurs. Staff doesn't have to do anything, nothing. So I think, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm getting a little bit emotional about this, because I think this is one of the key important things we have to do as council members. And it's already budgeted. Alright, so you, what you're doing is ignoring the last council member's um, budget that we put together and say, oh, it doesn't matter, we'll just change it. So that's what I'm saying, thank you.
Okay, um, I think I'm gonna bring it back to, uh, city manager Leon Artis. You put this item on the agenda and you're looking for direction. Um, you've heard comments from the public, you've heard comments from, uh, all the council members. Uh, do you have? What do you think? What do you propose next steps should be on this item?
Based on the discussion, I understand that council member Turner, this is very near and dear to her heart. And I also hear that the entire council um, doesn't disagree with the concept of certain public safety. I think you're all very supportive of that concept. I think it just comes to a matter of logistics. And, uh, where is, how it will be staffed, how it will be supported. Uh, those are all question marks. And then we have to take in, into consideration, yes, council member Turner says we can put it in the parking lot. All we have to do is call Jackie Rose and write the check and they will take care of the rest. They will stock it, they'll install it, they'll they'll, I guess for lack of a better word, staff it, man it, um, and we won't have to worry about anything. But I do believe it's not quite that simple on the surface. Um, I do believe that it can be simple. I do believe that we can you know, potentially just put it in the parking lot, but you know, we'll, we'll have to move it. I think we should, in the interest of time, we haven't had one up until this point. We can probably make a more informed decision on this in the next, I'd say, two months, when we get more clarity on this clean water program. We have the meeting in April, as the mayor suggested on that. Um, we also don't have the information in front of us this evening. I mean, I guess where I'm coming at to, I don't wanna get too far off on a tangent here, but if we put the cert folks through the trouble of installing it in the parking lot within the next month, and we're gonna be moving it in two or three months, that doesn't make any sense to me. I do like the idea of reaching out to the fire department that was brought up by council member Craig. As well as, and I don't even recall who brought up this idea, I, I think I heard in conversation the other day, but you know, the potential to put it at the Church of Latter Day Saints, which is just down the street from us. That is technically in Los Gatos, but strategically, it's just like it's here, it's not very far away. You know, the discussion about having it on private property, yes, there are reasons why that may not be the best solution. So taking into consideration everything that staff has absorbed this evening. And what I believe council's intent was, I believe that we should probably continue further evaluation, exploration over the next, say, couple months. And then come back to council with more details on some of these questions that have been raised and timeframes, more concrete timeframes. This item was put on the agenda tonight at the request of council member Turner, and, and staff did its job to honor that. The first meeting after she had requested it be put on the agenda. But staff is not, um, how do I say this, being obstructionist, the fact that money was put in the budget back in twenty twenty-one. I apologize, council member Turner, I did not recall seeing the email that you mentioned to, uh, Mister Samoranos. About the fact, but that's not really an issue, because whether the twelve-five is there or not, or whether it's ten thousand or not. I believe council financially is in support of the idea. Um, that's not a whole heck of a lot of money for our city, for the amount of return we will get on that money for public safety. I, I don't think that's the issue with this council. I really think it's more of a question of logistics and how will it best serve the community and how it will be staffed. And that's, that's what I'm hearing from a majority of the council this evening. So my recommendation, just hearing what I heard to council, should you give us your blessing, would be to bring this item back at a future time when we've gathered more information about uh, where to put it. And I do like the vice mayor's suggestion of, you know, looking at the totality of these three ideas. Perhaps through the existing, uh, community room committee, um, adding to their charter. And making the whole master plan, one plan.
So let me make a comment on what I heard. I think that that you're recognizing the, uh, the need for, for this, but also uh, taking an integrated approach with whatever happens here on this property at city, at city hall. Um, and then understanding what potential alternatives are. Uh, and then come, and coming back in, say, sixty days or so. Uh, I think that, I think that would be a good approach. I, I like that approach. And, uh, council member Craig, you wanted to say something, go ahead, please.
Yes, I just had one more option I would just like to have investigated, and that would be to utilize our existing storage that we have here and create a walled off ten by ten area for an NICP, it would be integrated into the building. There would be no access from the building, there would only be access from the outside. And we could take the stuff that's in there and move it over to the public storage place on Blossom Hill or something like that. I don't know how often we have to get back there and get stuff, but seems like it's not very often.
Council member Craig, are you referring to our garage area?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Does, then, then, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, it's integrated, it's stable, we don't have to worry about, um, infringing on our, on our neighbors with a, with a shed or something like that, and, um, and if there's additional cost that might be involved in, in having a public storage place, I, I would be supportive of that if the costs were, were reasonable.
Um, so you've got some feedback, go ahead, council member.
I think there's a lot of good suggestion being made, but just basically find the best location.
Right.
You know, because the garage, the garage, if it's somebody's private property, if it's somewhere else. But ideally, you also want it to be in a central location, you know, Dave's not that far from here. And if you go Whitey Road, you know, there's a whole couple miles of Montes, you know, up in the hills. And that, uh, there may be another central location, though. I would suggest you also really look at the map and see which is where, where can we put it, and then uh, what, how can we influence whoever has property nearby to maybe host it, and that should be a consideration, so.
Actually, um, council member Locky, that triggered a, a question. Is there a plot of land that we could rent to put an NICP on south of Highway nine in a high-risk area? And I, I, we don't have to discuss, debate it now, but that's just another alternative that I'd like to see staff come back with and say, no, it's not feasible at all, or you know, maybe there is something there. Do, do you have sufficient feedback to move forward with this in the next sixty days and, and come back to us?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. With that, um, I'd like to close item number one and then move to item two, which is consideration of two applications to fill one vacancy on the Monte Serena Better Streets Commission for an unexpired term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Uh, do we have a staff report on that?
Excuse me, Mister Mayor, um, because of a professional relationship I have with one of the applicants, I think it's proven for me to recuse myself from this agenda.
Okay, uh, so you were gonna recuse yourself, which I think requires you to leave.
Yes, yeah.
Take my little iPad and go to your trunk and then we'll
No, we need this council report.
I'll be watching some Netflix in there. Thank you, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
So on February twenty-first, uh, two thousand twenty-three, the city received the resignation of Commissioner Shalini Saxina on the Better Streets Commission. So per the California Government Code Section five four nine seven four, a notice of the unscheduled commission vacancy, which was included in the staff report, was posted in the cabinet outside the city hall, as well as our city, uh, website. And was distributed also on other city various social media outlets. The notice was posted no, uh, later than twenty days from when the vacancy occurred. And as required by the law and file appointment, the commission shall not be made by the city council for at least ten days. So we definitely had it posted for more than ten days. As a result of the city's recruitment, uh, to fill the seat, uh, we had two applications submitted, uh, Mister Omar Villawalla and Nancy Pearson. And so my, the staff's recommendation is that the city council consider and appoint one of the applicants for the Better Streets Commission to fill the one vacancy in the, the Monte Serena Better Streets Commission for the unexpired term ending December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three.
I'll ask a couple of questions and then I'll ask council tasks questions. The normal term, what would the normal term be? So it, it would be to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, but then what's the term after that?
So they would have to reapply, I believe it's two years.
It's a two-year, two-year term, okay. That's my question, and then just for, for planning in the next few minutes. I believe we had one of the applicants appear here in person, and unfortunately, she had to leave. Um, do we have either or both of the applicants, uh, attending via Zoom?
So, um, she just, you know, I'm sure she can log in, but I do have, uh, Mister Villawalla available.
Okay, thank you. So what I propose is, is asking questions of staff on the staff report. And then we'll ask each of the applicants to, to present, and we can ask them questions. And then, uh, I don't think we have to take public comment on this, or, or do, that's the question for, uh, I don't think we have to take public comment on this or or do with that the question for uh council.
Yes, Mister Mayor, we would take public comment.
Yeah, and do we take that after the um? The discussion with each applicant and before the voting?
It's at your discretion.
Thank you.
Definitely before the voting.
Not, okay, I got it. All right, questions for uh staff? Yeah, well, staff did their reporting, there are any questions? No? Okay, so uh do we have one or one of the applicants ready to uh make a comment?
Omar, would you like to address the council?
Uh sure, I I'm not quite sure what it is that the council would like to uh know or hear about. Uh but I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any background information.
Any questions?
Tell us why you're interested in this particular position.
I I've lived in Monastirino for quite a while now and uh. Walkability um and even the bike ability uh of the city. Uh has long been uh one of sort of my pet. Maybe peeves is the way to say it, I I uh I live in sort of the north part of Monastirino. And we are cut off from the rest of Monastirino, there is no reasonable, feasible way. To get from my home to uh ninety percent of Monte Serino. By bike or uh walking that is safe. And so, like I was looking at the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. There was no uh not 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 even a vague reference to that concern that I'm. Uh making, and it really is a big one, because I tried when my kids were younger, walking and Keto Road is phenomenally dangerous. So that that's one thing, but I also, and I think you guys know, I I um well, at least. Some, some of you know, uh from the Monastery Vision Committee, Avert, I'm a. A big fan of walkability, even having benches. I think the council knows from previous communications that I'm a fan of having a little libraries with benches. I I'm now in my sixties and I'm trying to walk at least three miles a day. Um so, yes, this is near and dear to my heart. Does that answer your question, Javed?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? No. Do we have uh? Ms Pearson?
Uh no, she is not able to log in.
Okay, so she's unable to uh to log in, I know that she was in the second row here tonight and I I feel. Bad that uh she's not able to to link up technically.
She did want to just say thank you for the consideration, hoping she's able to log in. Still to be taken into consideration. And we did receive some correspondence um that I did distribute to you guys as well as uploaded along to the agenda in regards to.
Understood, and could you, for the benefit of everyone, just summarize briefly, I I recall those being very. Uh succinct public comments. And while you're doing that, I would like to say that. Having more people participate and be involved in the city of Monte Serino is a good thing. And regardless of which applicant uh is selected tonight, I would certainly encourage. The uh other applicants to continue to look for opportunities, uh including. Additional opportunities on the Better Streets Commission, because it's just so important to have community input.
Okay, so uh we did receive an email um from Juan Allen uh one Monday. Saying that he respectfully wanted to recommend Nancy Pearson for the open seat in the Better Streets Commission. And then we also received um an email from. Uh Chair or our Chair for the Better Streets Commission, former um council member Liz Lawler. Who um also wants to submit her endorsement for Nancy Pearson for the Better Streets Commission. Uh she did state that, she said, my reasoning is, given I have returned after four years. And given that Nancy has served on the Better Streets during that time, and given that Jessica Khan recently left the city. And our current engineer having to come in with little knowledge of the Better Streets Commission, it would be very helpful. To me and the existing commissioners to have someone who is already familiar with the Better Streets Commission. And has been working and that has been working on and provide uh uh continuity for efficiency purposes. And those were the two emails received.
Okay. Um and is she available now? No? Okay, I think we're gonna have to move ahead. My comment would be whichever whichever candidate doesn't uh. Is not selected, they can always provide input and comment to the Better Streets Commission. Regardless if they're a commissioner or not. Um we've got four council members that are here, we've got one recused. How do we do this? Do we just, do 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 we call out who we believe?
Would you like other comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, before the vote, of course. Uh I would now like to open public comment. Uh on this item, if there's a member of the public uh appearing uh via Zoom, please raise your virtual hand, you will be recognized and allowed to speak. No one has raised their hand, so we will close public comment now and bring it back to council and how, oh, go ahead.
Since it's, thank you, it's back to council now. I think both of these applicants are are very qualified. Uh they both have the best intentions, I'm sure, so that's not. That's not a deciding factor, so I was looking for something that distinguishes these two applicants from each other. And so. I found one criterion that I I think is very important. I looked at where these uh where the current members of the committee live and where the two new, the the two candidates live. And I found that uh. Many of them are very close to each other, actually not too far away from where we are now.
From where we are?
From where we are now, here in the city hall.
Okay.
They're all within a. Well, everybody is close among the three of them, but these, they're really very close. The exceptions are uh Liz Lawler, who is a little bit farther away. Nancy Pearson actually lives very close to here also. The only one that lives really farther away is Omar Villawala. So if we want to have people representing all of Monastirino, we need to look at the location also, where do these people live? And that will turn my vote into a vote for Omar. Because he represents uh part of the city that's currently not represented on the committee.
I I think that's a good observation. Uh Villawala has been involved uh with sharing these inputs uh with the city over the years. There's a pretty active uh some member of the committee. And he's uh had an excellent background. So and Nancy Pearson also a great asset, so they work very, very well qualified. Uh but I think the diversity that Vice Mayor picks up, that that's important. And I also like the fact that he's into, you know, taking on bicycling and walking and those kind of things.
Okay, and council member Turner, do you have any comments?
She says no, she shut it.
Okay, then how will we conduct the vote?
So can I refer to Denise, um would. Could one of them, one of our council members make a motion to appoint and then as long as they have a second, we can proceed with. That motion?
That's exactly correct, so we just need a motion from a council member on one of the candidates, and if it's supported by a second. Then we would take a vote on that motion, and if it succeeds, then we've appointed a a new committee member. If it fails, then there's an opportunity to make uh another motion on a different candidate.
Um I I'll make the motion, my motion is to appoint Omar Villawala to the Better Streets Commission. I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Turner?
Could you repeat the motion, please? I couldn't hear.
So the motion is to appoint Omar Villawala for the Better Streets Commission. Sorry, let me read exactly, to appoint uh Mister Villawala. Uh to fill the vacancy of the Monte Serino Better Streets Commission for the unexpired term ending December thirty first, twenty twenty three.
No.
Council member Craig. And council member Lockey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolfheimer?
Yes.
Mayor McCauchan?
I, motion carries, I would like, or the the nomination carries, I would like to make a comment. That I applaud both applicants and I. Encourage Ms Pearson to uh be involved with the Better Streets Commission. And also to apply for uh. Future openings on the Better Streets Commission, I'm, and as council member Lockey noted, we've got excellent candidates. And the geographic diversity that Vice Mayor Wolfsheimer pointed out is. I think of of value to all the residents of Monte Serino. With that, uh. We've uh completed item two, and now we move to committee commission reports. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Well, you're at the top of the list, I am, there's all the cool stuff that's in there. Especially the candy, you're gonna have to make the trip. You've got all my favorites in there. Council member Craig, uh I haven't had dinner yet, so. It was like. They better vote on somebody sooner, I'm going to.
Just a point of reference, normally with the six o'clock meeting.
Committee and commissioner reports, go ahead.
Oh, let me make this one quick, we had a youth commission meeting where KCAD came in and talked to us about what they're doing these days. And talked to some of the commissioners about possibly doing a youth commission podcast or maybe taking on some other. Media projects around Monte Serino, so that was very exciting, talked about some of the internship positions that we have over the summer time. And that was it. I'm sorry, I could not fill in for you at the VTA, I had an emergency that day.
Un- understood, uh I'll just make a comment on that, I think that. We're moving into recruiting season for um the youth commissioners, it would be great that we start to. Uh start that recruiting.
That is a very good idea.
Okay, that's that's my only comment, uh thank you, uh council member Lockey, go ahead, please.
I'll I'll follow up with a new commission comment, uh Rotary has a lot of policies for youth and stuff like that. Uh city association meeting I attended last time was basically the less late session they went to, why you can't just. There's a lot of bills coming down on housing and things that know what they're ready to put together housing. And uh. The latest one, and and I look at these housing buildings, they're more like trickle housing buildings, you know, where they're really saying. Uh we need the element for affordable housing, but they're ending up building um developments really for the rich developers. And they're hoping that some of it will trickle down to affordable housing. So I think another report needs to be taken to these affordable, so far, for the launching this. Uh the other issue that is important that some of the the West Valley Water Authority, I can't, I don't know if I'm on board?
Wet Valley Clean Water.
Yeah.
Uh Joint Powers. Or ESAF, I'm sure.
Yeah, so there's two bills that they are sponsoring. Uh one is supposedly designed to take care of the. Uh unsheltered people, I guess, unsheltered people that are living on their property. And they want authority to be able to build homes for supposedly unsheltered people. The problem I had is that the bills sound really good, you're taking care of the unhoused. But it's giving the valley authority almost a carte blanche, they can build whatever they want. And my concern is that with that much free land available, the developers are coming, they're coming, and the valley valley authority land is going to turn into a full fledged.
Just, I I may have misspoke, there's valley water.
Yeah, there will.
And then there's. Yeah, that, they're very different, I'm sorry.
This, I think this is the valley water, it's a bill that's been sponsored by Ash, Calra, and Gift Color, and then. It sounds good, I mean, you look at it and say it's the best thing you can do is provide shelter. So I, you know, I questioned the person who was presenting it and I said, why don't you just build a home right now? And they said, well, we can, but we can't lease it for more than five years, so if you can do it right now, do it, and five years later, you can extend it again. So why do you really need this authority? And I I haven't got a clear answer, answer to that, so that. It's going to come back to the city association, and I'm I'm requesting you guys to give some talks on whether. Monte Serino wants to support that bill or abstain or oppose it, I obviously abstain because they're in the party to do this.
Okay, I I think that uh Vice Mayor Wolfheimer, that's something for you to take to Santa Clara Valley Water District. And and raise.
Yeah, I think it's, if you put in seventy one or put in seventy two, one of those numbers.
Anything else? No, that's it, all right, uh council member Turner, uh go ahead, please.
Uh are you taking comments or or committee assignments? Because I have a comment to make.
Uh we're we're taking uh committee commission reports.
I I'll wait until the comments.
Okay, so you have nothing to report on West Valley Sanitation District?
No.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Wolfheimer.
I'd like to report on the Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority meeting, it was mostly a financial meeting. The board approved the new uh fee schedule. Uh with some increases, we also discussed the budget for the next fiscal year. And we had a choice out of the two options, fifty percent increase for all the city. Or a three percent increase and pull fifty thousand dollars from the reserve for the organization. The board voted to do the second one. So sixty thousand dollars will come from the reserve and uh fees for the city will increase by three percent. Which in our case, Monastirino, means our uh contribution will go from thirty two thousand to thirty three thousand dollars per year. By the way, we're contributing one point six four percent of the total. Of the organization, because we're much smaller than the other three cities, so. We also approved a six point three percent cost of living adjustment for staff for the next fiscal year.
Sorry, what percent?
Six point three.
Six point three, okay.
Seems to be kind of standard. Going around. The budget, the total budget for next fiscal year is two point six million for the organization. And the reserves are two million dollars, so the organization is in financial uh financial in pretty good shape. Uh it's always a pleasure to be at the organization, uh and that is the first uh in-person meeting in three years.
Wow.
That was it, thank you.
Okay, now it's it's me and I'm sorry, I've got it actually a bit of a lengthy list. Nothing on the city's association, city selection committee, uh the VTA meeting, the next meeting is in April. Uh and unfortunately, uh neither Burton nor council member Craig nor I were able to attend the last meeting. Uh. West Valley Clean Water and West Valley Solid Waste, uh, they meet on the same day. And that next meeting is in the first week of May. Uh, then, so I have nothing to report there. Uh, Association of Bay Area Governments, nothing to report. Um. And then I've got, I'm now on the Santa Clara County Recycling and Solid Waste Reduction. Commission, and we're having our second meeting next month. Uh. And that meeting is going to be in Morgan Hill. But I will be hosting a remote meeting, a satellite meeting from here in city council chambers. So I'll have a few uh people attending locally here, so that it it saves us the trip down. To Morgan Hill and for a five thirty meeting, which is right in the hill, a rush hour. Um. I talked about the VTA, and then uh the mayors of Santa Clara County. There was a meeting that Mayor Matt Mahan uh. Uh, call of the fourteen mayors. And we were supposed to have a gentleman, the intergovernmental affairs. Uh, uh director. Uh, but he canceled at the last minute, but I do know that there's going to be some asks where. Uh, Mayor Mahan would like to have signatures from everyone. From all the mayors, but obviously I will not, cannot do that without the consent of council. So I'm kind of giving them a heads up, and I'm not alone. All the other mayors are saying the same thing. And I thought it would be helpful to have an introductory meeting and a brief presentation, but that didn't happen today. Um, as well with West Valley mayors and managers. Um, we met last week. And. Where we had two chief of polices there, one for La Scatos Monte Serena, which was Chief Field. And then another for Campbell, uh, chief of police. And the other two jurisdictions being Cupertino and Saratoga. They are, they receive police services from the county. So there, the issue that is coming up is what Chief Field described briefly. I believe she was responding to your question on concealed carry. And that's something that. La Scatos. Campbell and other jurisdictions are dealing with, and um. I believe that we should. Consider what they're doing, and I ask that city manager Leonardo coordinate. With city uh manager Prabetti, town manager Prabetti. Uh, so that we're moving in in lockstep, because the chief of police explained to me, if you've got. Monte Serena has different laws than La Scatos. It makes it hard. For the dispatcher to understand where calls are coming from, et cetera. And then for the officers to understand what the what the laws are. So it's just, I'm just giving you a heads up that that's going to be on the radar screen, and it will be coming. I believe something will be coming in the next sixty days. Steve, what do you think on that?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then on the city of Monte Serena, uh. In terms of the community center committee, we met this morning at nine AM. And it was kind of an update meeting, and this is is going to flow into um. Future agenda items, but what. Uh, what the committee discussed today was. Coming back to or having a committee meeting. Talking about the finalization, if you will, of what the design is for the community center. And then having the. Committee present the city council at a dedicated city council meeting where all we talk about is the community center. So I wanted to put that. Um. As a future agenda item and just give everyone some understanding of that that's ahead and what. If I could be with them. Uh, at the next meeting, I would also say, talk to them about taking an integrated approach. Between the NICP, the work in on the pavement. And then also the community center. So. That concludes my reporting. Uh. On my commissions and committees. And with that. I believe we want to go to the to city, to council member comments. And at this point in time, I believe councilmember Turner wanted to make a comment. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I wanted to. Um. Find out if I, we could have. The um. Staff person in charge of the um. See Click Fix to give us a report on on that app. Um, previously, it was Michelle Radcliffe, who owned See Click Fix. And I'm not sure who owns it now, if it's city manager or um. City manager or. Maybe Diana Perkins or Glossy, I'm not sure. But I'd like to hear. You know, where we're at. That would have been really good during this outage that we had, power outages. Uh, if if the residents could have given you the information, you could have reported it to PG&E. Because PG&E were, they were prioritizing based on the number of calls that they received within a street. And I I had no power for six days, and they said, well, we only heard from three people. So if 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 more people had access to See Click Fix, then we could report that's, you know, eight. Homes in one street doesn't have power for six days, and you can go street by street. So I'd like to get a um. Report in that, please, maybe at the next meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner, I have a question for you. Uh, as an advocate of See Click, or sorry, Fix It Monte Serena. Did you uh report that your power was off on on that?
You're in mute.
No, I did not, because I had problems with my back as well. And we had two trees that were down on our yard, but I did call PG&E several times. And I have, I had to help a uh resident who was ninety five years old that did not want PG&E in in his yard. So. We were busy, but I'd like to to hear, you know, more information about See Click Fix and what we can do. To uh market it. Perhaps at our next um. Our next picnic.
We'll work together on bringing back a staff report.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can comment on that, uh, what we have done since the departure of previous city clerk. Michelle Estabio, uh, we have incorporated this C-click, or we call it Fix It Monte Serena. Status report into the city manager's quarterly report. The last city manager's quarterly report, I believe, was done the meeting before last for Q four of twenty twenty two. We have another one for the first quarter of twenty twenty three coming up at our April meeting. So you will see all the latest information from the Fix It Monte Serena report then.
Great, thank you. Uh, other councilmember comments?
Yeah, I I just just picking up on that. Is is that an app also, or is it on iPhone, or is it just on the computer?
No, it should be an app.
Fix it, it's an app.
Yeah.
Because I know when the power is down, people have problems. Getting to the computer and their phone doesn't work. Because I I got a call.
Actually, yeah, I downloaded it, Monte Serena's uh See California, and it says just fix it. Um, yeah, so there is an application.
So so maybe I need to promote it more, but I know I even got a call. Somebody told I was the mayor. I didn't want to refer to Mayor Mecha, but you know, and they couldn't access the internet, and so I, you know, I checked it out for them and. They should be set when the power is up, yeah. The next day. So uh, that that's also an issue. People will probably try to use those or whatever else. And uh. I I think there was a comment earlier on by somebody who was also very upset about PG&E uh. And the barbing after so long and uh. Uh, that it was not acceptable. I don't know if there's anything else we can do to pressure PG&E to maybe go underground or do something else. So that these issues don't don't come up. So something for our uh. Stronger city manager to take a look at, see if we can pull some muscle there.
You know, I I would. The CPUC regulates uh. PG&E and uh I wish you luck in. Uh, making comment to the CPUC. Um, sorry, I'm getting a little cynical. Other councilmember comments?
Just just. One more comment. I I sent out an email to everybody inviting you guys to, or asking you to see Monte Serena was interested in hosting a table. For the West Valley Community uh Center, they have their chefs. Steps for compassion. I received one response from a person who could make it, but I didn't hear from anyone else. So that event is completely sold out. But it would have been a really good, good event with uh all the best chefs uh in Santa Clara County providing some really good food and. Drinks at the same time. So keep it open for next year. Okay, thank you.
Um, no other comments. No other comments. Okay, uh, move to city managers' report. Mr. Leonardo.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind the council that Saturday, April first. We have our annual goal-setting session right here at City Hall. Beginning at nine thirty AM. If you come at nine AM, we will be putting out some breakfast items. Please inform. Our city clerk. Luisi Gonzalez Longarica, if you have any special requests for food items. And um. In the meantime, if you could think of some ideas on how to improve. Our beautiful city of Monte Serena in the form of big. Big ideas. That is what a strategic goal is. We have five categories of goal derived from our general plan. Things like our public safety, environmental sustainability, those types of items. Um, some items are tasks. Um, we want to focus on goals. So big ideas. And those will become part of our um annual budget coming up June first.
And then, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
I wanted to ask a question. Uh, will there be a facilitator, or will you facilitate a meeting? And what's the general flow of the meeting?
So Mayor Mecha check and I have. Um. Worked on this idea together, and in the past, we hired a facilitator. I think it was around about starting in twenty seventeen, when you were on council last time. Um, this year, we opted out, and we brought the idea back to a weekend for more of a casual. Sit down, have some food, and I will be doing the facilitating.
Who else is invited to the city council? Are any of the planning commissioners, the benefit commission, or any other individuals that have invited? Uh, with more than just a.
The entire public of Monte Serena is invited here. Well, I can, we can reach out to all the committee members, the what we call our site and architecture committee, as well as our better streets commissioners to join us. Um. We will have access via Zoom as we are with this meeting, so the entire public can join. Uh, we welcome the feedback of everyone and their comments. Um, we, of course, want all council members to be in person. Um, as far as our staff will be here. I know that myself will be here. I know that our city clerk will be here. I haven't formally asked others, but I think they understand the importance of being here. Um, to answer questions. And as far as our um. Attorney. This bizarre potentially, I I believe you will be here or available. I didn't ask you, but. We can discuss that later, if if you need to be. But it's not certain that you need to be in person, but.
So. Let me make make a a couple of comments. First of all. From what I understand of attending other. Uh. Meetings such as this. And listening to what happened in our adjacent communities. This doesn't, you're not making decisions in this. It's a discussion. And as you pointed out, what goes on in the discussion will then be brought forth in a budget. So any decisions are more at the budget level, and this is an input into the into the budget for twenty twenty three. Slash twenty twenty four. Um, and. I think that. There's, when I look back and reflect over the past few years. It seems like it's easy to put forth an idea. And, oh, I think we should do this. But you know, it's almost like we've got five or seven staff members, and we've got five council members. So we don't, we're very limited on resources, and I would put forth that. If city council believes we should undertake a strategic initiative. And really drive that, that they take, oh, they be a champion of that item. So so I would encourage each each city council member to think, you know. What do you want to help advocate and be and be a resource for moving something forward? So um, I wanted to make that comment.
Okay.
Anything else in your city manager report, Mr. Leonardi?
In the interest of a late hour, I would say we will save it for next time. Oh, one brief comment, uh, the social justice award has been launched by the Monte Serena. Youth Commission. We are distributing that to our community in the through the school district. For applications as well as um our community newsletter, the Peaceful Mountain Monitor. We'll be hitting your mailboxes in early April, so look for that.
Great, now we move on to future agenda items. Uh, would any member of council at this late hour like to put anything? As a future agenda item?
No. I'll make it quick. Uh, there was a concern raised by uh former Mayor Ron Ellen about swimming pool water usage. So uh, at some point, I think we need to consider that also, whether we need to invite the valley water people or whoever runs our water system. To maybe put some definitions around how big the size of a swimming pool should be. Or whether, I mean, obviously, you can't say you don't have any more swimming pools, but it might be something that we should consider as a pool. We can say that it's more than possible, but I'd like to see that as some future good item.
Okay, uh. In the interest of time, it's just. Me and future agenda items and adjournment. Oh, councilmember Turner, you have your hand raised. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I would like to see if if staff could give us a report on builder's remedy. Yeah, it seems like that's going to be the next next big thing with the housing. Thank you.
I I might suggest council may be better person to do that. Uh, since they were. Is is that something you can undertake as far as letting us know where you, we should be concerned about that or not?
Yes, our office can certainly send a confidential memo to the council so that you have some information. Uh, about the builder's remedy.
Thank you.
I will, would like to put a future agenda item in place. Um. I know that on other JPAs that I'm involved with, that. They're looking at their cash balances, and they're looking at what they do. And when I did a quick back, beyond low calculation, it looks like we've got uh some money that's. First of all, is with uh Wells Fargo Bank, and I'm reasonably. Okay with it being with a large uh top tier bank. That's not an issue, but I believe that the interest that we're worked, that we're earning. There's uh, we could improve that. And just rough numbers, if we have. Six, six and a half million dollars or six million dollars, and we've got uh. We need to keep a cash balance of around a million dollars, a million and a half. That leaves. Around five billion dollars. That could be earning perhaps a higher rate of return. And when I look at the existing. Two and a half percent, that could be as as or two percent that we're earning. It could be up to four and a half in a in a. Two and a half percent, that could be as as or two percent that we're earning, it could be up to four and a half in a in a T bill. Um. And so if there is possibly a a two and a half percent on five billion dollars. You know, if you do the math, it works out to over ten thousand dollars a month, and I would like to see staff. Do some type of an analysis on this and bring it to council and maybe involve the. Ad hoc finance committee on this.
Yeah, I think the finance committee should.
Um, so Mister Leonardi, uh, you would like to say something, go ahead, please.
We may be one step ahead of you, we have already done the analysis and prepared a simple report, well, as simple as money, numbers, math can be. And we were planning on um reaching out to you to coordinate the finance ad hoc committee to review those. Numbers, so if you want to pick a time when yourself and the vice mayor are available, we're ready to go with that.
Great, okay, uh, with that, I, oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
Um, since you brought up numbers, uh, Oakland. City of the has been hacked, right, you guys know about that?
Yeah.
They're 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 leaving money every day, I mean, moving people. I just want to make sure Monte Serena is doing everything possible. So that we're not subjected to fishing expeditions and we don't get hacked or something. Fact that we're small, probably help, but I I I do really need to manage a lot of that.
Okay, uh. Just before we adjourn. I would like to thank our uh city attorney uh for stepping in for Mister Rudin tonight. Thank you very much uh for staying up so late with us. All right, uh, I will adjourn the meeting at ten fourteen PM.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Mister Ruder probably told you these meetings are short, right?